Counselor Smith?
Good morning, folks.
All right, we'll call the committee whole meeting to order. Public information notices as required and under notice by law one forty-four dash two thousand and seven. The public is advised the council's intention to adopt the following at its November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. Declare city-owned lands a surplus to the requirements of the municipality being the southern portion of Twelfth Street, described as parts one and two on Plan twenty-three R dash fourteen six nine five and having an area of point zero five eight hectares. Declaration of community interests in the general nature thereof on today's agenda from a meeting in which a member was not in attendance. Do we have any?
Hard to see, eh?
Yeah, all right. Confirmation of previous committee minutes. We have motion?
Your worship resolution number one, who filed myself and seconded by Counselor Goss, that the minutes from the last regular committee, the whole meeting held October eighth, two thousand and nineteen be confirmed and written and filed.
All in favor. Chair? All right, we have a number of deputations and presentations this morning. The first one, I'd like to call up Mr. Dave Schwab. Dave, I'll let, we'll welcome you to the podium, all right? Dave, when you speak, the, it doesn't magnify, it's a recorder, so if you use your outside voice, so everybody can hear it, be good.
I will do my best to do that.
Thank you.
Your worship mayor and counselors, I really want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. This is really special for me for two reasons. One, I'm just glad to be here. I know I am fortunate and I'm very thankful every day to be alive. And the second thing is, the reason I'm alive is because of these two gentlemen over here, Steve and Jake. As most of you know, probably, I was attacked by a black bear on the Rice Lake Road at the end of September. According to the M and R biologist I talked to, this bear displayed all the characteristics of a predator. He was after a meal, he wasn't curious, and I was it. I fought the thing off three times and kept going towards my cabin. I started yelling for help when I got about two hundred meters from my cabin, and miraculously, these guys heard me. And somehow, they sensed an urgency, we haven't talked about this, an urgency in my shouts for help, because they didn't come walking up the road to see what was going on, they came ripping up the road in the truck. Jake hauled me in and gave me water. At that point, I was totally spent physically, emotionally, I mean, the adrenaline rush. I mean, this bear, I have some pretty significant wounds to my leg and to my elbow. I don't know if they're gonna fight the bear off again. And the M and R guy said, he wanna come at you again, 'cause that's what predators do, they wear you down. So I'm really thankful to be alive. In my mind, these guys are heroes, how they acted so quickly, drove me to Kenora, I shouldn't say this, the OPP aren't here, but Steve, I mean, I had my wound, I was bleeding, I had muscle coming up through, I'm not trying to be gross here, coming up through the incisor bites. He was passing on double lines, he was a terror on their own, but he sensed the urgency. So I really thank these guys, and the award, the recognition they're getting today is something that they really deserve and they're worthy of. So I thank them, and I thank you for this.
So at this... Yep. So at this time, I'd like to call up Steve and Jacob. And Steve, the description of your driving kind of reminds me of the way you played hockey when you were young.
On behalf of the city, this is a recognition of bravery during a hair attack. It's on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Your quick actions to help a stranger save his life in a selfless act like this that are honoring and make our community proud. On behalf of the council, city, Kenora, thank you.
I have got same. I won't read the same, but it's the same certificate of recognition presented on behalf of the city of Kenora. So thank you very much. And just a small token of my gratitude. Did you want, we got a picture of the city, that would please come up?
Sure.
All right.
Be in the middle of falling.
All right. The first, I'll remind both groups that you have fifteen minutes, and that will include council's time if they have any questions. If your time goes that far, I will, I'll let you know at ten minutes, just so you have a gauge of how much time you have left, so you can time accordingly. So the first we have is to discuss Uptown for Twenty Twenty Safer City, and I invite Chad, and Chad, our Alexis, and Carla gonna also come, or are you doing it, or?
We're just here as a learn group.
Okay, so, please come forward. Chad, as long as, as long as your voice, it'll record.
It will.
So, the more important part is everybody hears you.
Thank you all for this opportunity, for speaking in front of you this morning. My name is Chad Grubb. I've been a business owner in our community for over eighteen years, and I am joined today with eight of us as well here, too. We strongly believe that our role as a small business in our community significantly contribute to the overall well-being of our community. We are the people who hire your children, your grandchildren, your wives, and your spouses. We support your local sports teams and your charitable causes in our community. We get to know our customers and bend over backwards to accommodate them. We work very hard to ensure that our community is prospering, because the success of our community is critical to the success of our small businesses. We are here today because we are very concerned. Despite the role that our businesses play in our community, we feel that our voices are not being heard by you, the leaders of our community and the city staff. As business owners, we have been getting together and having conversations with over twenty-five local businesses being represented and participating, and without exception, the feeling of the lack of communication and engagement by the city has been raised as a major concern. To be frank, we do not feel that our interests are being represented. We have had to take more time away from our houses, our families, and our businesses to prepare this presentation, to ensure that our voice is represented, because we feel that we have been left out of very important conversations that directly impact us all. Currently, our community is facing significant challenges with the arrival of new street drugs and addiction-ish issues like we have never seen. These challenges have raised concern by business, which I will touch on more in terms of safety, security, and prosperity. These also warrant major decisions by you. Over the past few months, we have heard the message coming from City Hall that these are police issues, that they are health unit issues, that they are KDSB issues. We believe that these are community issues, and we have elected you to be the leaders of our community. We all pay taxes to you, which distribute to the other agencies. We need you to stand up and take a leading role in addressing these issues, and we want you to do so, to do with the safety, security, and prosperity of the entire community, including our businesses in mind. We feel that we can offer a new perspective that would be helpful in solving the challenges faced by our community, and we are here to invite you to start the process of having meaningful conversations with all businesses in our community. This includes businesses in the Harbor Town Center, but also businesses who are spread out, who are commonly affected throughout the entire community. The challenges we are currently facing are impacting a wide variety of businesses, not just those in the core, and we believe that engaging a larger group of business and speaking with us, who are not usually invited to contribute to all these discussions, result in a stronger and more effective community solutions. Throughout our conversations, the issue of safety, security, and much more continually rose to the top of our major concern. Our local customers are telling us that they do not feel safe. They are not attending our businesses because our local residents do not feel safe in doing so. To us, this is terrifying. Our businesses depend on our local residents fifty-two weeks a year. If they do not feel safe coming to our business, our business will be in jeopardy, as many are today. We have also heard similar concerns from our visiting customers, and we are scared that they will not return to the community. As a community, under your leadership, we need to work to repair the negative experience many of the visitors this past year felt, so they continue to come back. The situation may not impact all businesses right away, but if this situation continues and isn't addressed appropriately, and more importantly, quickly, all businesses will be feeling the effect of declining business in the next few years, if not even being shut down. In our discussions, we have business owners say that they had not experienced the significant increase in sales in the last two weeks in August after the hub was shut down, that they were considering shutting down their business for good. This is very disappointing. Multiple businesses currently located downtown are looking to relocate out of downtown for security of their customers and their employees. As local business owners, we are not okay with the way that we are currently feeling unsafe. Many of us had had to incur considerable additional staffing costs to make sure that their staff are safe. Many of us are employing two staff when only one is necessary or should be necessary. Multiple businesses reported feeling the need to stay barricaded within their building past closing time to feel safe to leave at a decent time. Because they are threatened by the conditions outside, they have witnessed assaults in broad daylight on innocent people going about their lives, and have had to watch drug deals and human trafficking in our community, taking place outside their stores, restaurants, and everywhere else, not only downtown Kenora. We are looking to you as our elected representatives to stand up and take meaningful action to improve these situations. Businesses are also having to make safety improvements to our buildings, pay high insurance deductibles due to theft and vandalism that is taking place. The money that we are investing to increase our safety is taken away from that we could contribute back to our town, to other businesses, to community events, local sports teams, and charities. Also, we cannot recruit new outside staff, because our town is not safe. That is the common voice that we hear. We don't want to move to Kenora, it's not safe. In our conversations, many of us are frustrated. Multiple businesses have said they will not be making planned renovations to their business or property. I am one of them for sure. There was a concern as taxpayers that the city continues to spend our taxpayer mon- money on initiatives that are not improving the situation in our town. We want the city to address the situation we have been experiencing in the last six months firsthand with significant results before starting new projects downtown. Businesses are also requesting from MPAC reassessments, because we feel, given what is happening in our community and their specific locations to all of our properties, values have decreased. This is not a good situation for our town or the tax base. This affects us all. Despite all of this concern, we do see opportunity to improve the situation in our entire community. There is an all-nations health team being formed, and the new community justice center piled on horizon. It would be really great to see like an all-encompassing care campus for those who are suffering from addictions and other mental health illnesses, can receive the treatment that they need in an area that is appropriate and free from temptations. Our group of local businesses strongly encourage partnership opportunities to better the addictions-ish issues within our communities. We would like to caution that these are longer-term solutions, though, and we cannot wait three to five years for these to happen. Many of us will be bankrupt, probably by next year. We cannot endure one more year like we just had. We are asking you to make all of your decisions from a place based upon solid facts and evidence, so that we know that our community will be better off. We have seen discussions about a possible safe injection site, and we understand that there are some situations in which this would be appropriate. But given the research we have done and the experience lived by other small communities, we do not feel this is a good decision for our town. We urge you to no longer consider this as an option. We are also asking you to consider the impact of all your decisions on all the local businesses, not just the downtown core. Our businesses are the heart of our community. We want to succeed and support the community, but we need you to ensure that we are operating in an environment that allows us to be safe. We are here, and we have opinions, and we want you to come to us, please, so we want to help. As a starting point to resolve this situation, we are requesting, one, that the city sends out regular email correspondences to all the business owners about progress and the money spent towards crime reduction, rehabilitation, and downtown revitalization. Two, the city needs to make police presence and enforcement downtown a constant and to uphold the OPP accountable for this. We need to see the officers out walking daily, twenty-four-seven. Crime doesn't stop at two AM. We need the city to present us with their immediate plan for their safety and crime reduction to provide us with the opportunity for meaningful two-way conversations. This needs to be open to all business owners. We are not satisfied with the planning that has been undertaken by our city, and we need you to consider the impacts of your zoning decisions on our businesses going forward. We also need to evaluate the planning and reconsider zoning decisions when there is a significant negative impact of these decisions on the greater community and our ability to run our businesses successfully, which is currently happening in the downtown core. We are here today to ask you for a few simple things, to take concrete action on the difficult issues facing us, and to communicate, consult with us on progress and challenges that you encounter, that we all encounter. This is a citywide problem, let's all address it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Does anybody from council have any questions? All right. Chad, a couple things to your group. To say in your opening comments, the city does not participate and does not take an active role, I would strongly disagree. Adam, if you could make, I'd ask you to make comments on the community's safety plan and the upgrade on that, please.
Yeah, so for the, I think what we should hear about the, 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 the whole, we need to have this new plan, at least over half of it in December, for which then we need to look at, having some further communications with the business community on, on the difference of, like, above, kind of, concerns. And I think that's very, very important to it, which we need to have some, uh, that we have to talk about. So I think that's, you know, something that we'll decide, that's the end, we'll have a plan, probably around five years, so, um, that's something that we need to do.
The other thing, Chad, you mentioned there's approximately twenty-five to twenty-eight businesses. I would assume that some would be members of the Kenora District Chamber of Commerce or the Harbor Town Biz. Now, the city, along with both those organizations, and I would, that's who we deal with, you know, those, Kenora District, or District Chamber of Commerce and the Harbor Town Biz, we have representatives on those, and those are the, that's the voice that comes back to us. Now, along with them, the city, the OPP, the KDSB, North Western Health Unit, Nichi Friendship Center, have met to discuss the downtown safety. That meeting was held on October the eleventh. From that, Biz and the Chamber of Commerce made a commitment to flow information on safety concerns, and I've got in last week's weekly newsletter from the Chamber of Commerce that flowed out to what each group's doing to address that. So, there, if you don't have that information and members aren't part of it, we would gladly forward that to the members. I know Alexis is, is going, is in the elected vice president, so she would be able to... Yeah.
So, in that, um, the other two, I think, has been, um, the, um, the, um, the, um, so, in that, um, the other two, I think, has been, um, the, um, the, um, the, um, so, in that, um, the other two, I think, has been, um, the, um, the, um, the, um, so, in that, um, the other two, I think, has been, um, the, um, the, um, the, um, but that's the main, the, 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 the,
and we're going to proceed with the design of the facility and get it ready to tender construction." And so, you know, we were very pleased that that actually happened. The letter of intent was issued. And it was a real win-win situation. It would solve our problems and provide, make use of excess capacity in the city's infrastructure and provide you with some supplemental user fees and income. That letter of intent stated that the agreement was to be negotiated fairly between the parties, and there were a number of principles that were, were cited, including that we would pay for 100% of the costs of the system, which we've done. That system would be installed in accordance with city of Canora requirements, including any measures to prevent any cross-contamination, contamination with the city water systems and distribution systems. That was, there were measures that were identified, engineered, designed, and constructed, and again, paid for by us. And then, that the, our First Nation would be responsible to pay the appropriate fees to the city related to the provision of potable water and collection and treatment of wastewater, recognizing that the city runs a user pay system. So, we've never had a dispute with that. I think where we're having some issues and will articulate on them is what actually constitutes appropriate fees. The project was tendered in 2018, awarded for construction. It's now actually nearing completion, and we'll be ready for the interconnection by the end of the month. So the total project costs are about $13 million. The removal of the boil water order, which has been the principal driving force for the entire project and process, would be able to be removed within one to two weeks after full completion and final commission of the systems, after which the residents of our First Nation will finally have access to a basic necessity of life and a fundamental human right, that is, safe drinking water. We've been working now for a number of months with the city administration on the development of the agreement, and we've gone back and forth with various iterations and comments. And in response to our most recent draft, we received a letter from, from the city advising that this is the final draft that the city administration is prepared to recommend to council. And city officials have taken the position that until this MTSA has been signed, that the final connection to the system can't be completed and that the service system won't connect. Until we get this settled, we're going to be on a boil water order and not be able to use the infrastructure that we've invested in. We want to recognize and appreciate the efforts of the city staff in engaging with us in this process. We know everybody has their mandate and their responsibilities and accountabilities, and we absolutely respect that. But our council and Indigenous Services, after reviewing the most recent draft, have been clear that they're unable to sign it in the current form. And this is for a number of reasons. One, generally, the tone and the content of the agreement reflects the position of the city administration that we dealt with, that this is not a partnership, but we're just another customer. And so while we agree that rates and standards of conduct required of our communities should be consistent with those of other users, as our chief mentioned, this initiative was conceived as a collaboration and a partnership between our communities. And after it's done, the reality is Rajushka Nigam Nation will be entirely dependent on the city for drinking water supply. Secondly, the draft agreement provides the city the power to make unilateral decisions in its sole authority in any circumstance where city administration determines that WAN does not instruct compliance with the agreement. We have proposed wording that leaves the authority of the city intact, but compels you to act reasonably, not just in your sole discretion when exercising powers under the agreement. Draft agreement, thirdly, limits authorized users to include only residential units. WAN is a community, not a subdivision. Like any community, ours already consists of a mix of land uses including residential, institutional, and commercial. And like the city of Canora, we're a dynamic community that aspire to grow and diversify our community and the services and opportunities that we're able to provide from our own lands. The agreement that we enter into needs to provide for this in the present and the future, and in its current form does not. It retains unilateral authority, accepting emergency and extreme circumstances for making decisions on what occurs as far as future development in the city. The draft agreement provides the city with an effective veto of any future development in WAN. Again, we accept that we need to notify the city of new connections and provide information so that you can anticipate new demands and assess potential impacts. But again, the agreement should compel the city to act reasonably in a manner and timing in which it must respond to new connections and again, compel it to act reasonably. While city administration have suggested it's not their intent to frustrate the development of the community, we acknowledge that. The fact is that the city, the most recent draft agreement provides the city with the absolute power to do so without any recourse by WAN. It certainly has not left us with the feeling that trusting, left us with the feeling that we would necessarily be treated fairly. The draft agreement lacks any provisions for notice and care of any defaults or any dispute resolution mechanism. Disputes occur and complicate agreements of this nature, so again, in the spirit of acting reasonably, those sorts of provisions should be provided. And finally, the method of calculating the service fees in the agreement, and this is a strong message from our federal partners in particular, is simply unfair. And along with, and we don't believe that the methodology is fair, reasonable, and defensible. Service fees should be based on the number of connections, not based on an estimate of average use in a particular period. System averages are estimates only and are likely distorted by commercial and institutional buildings, by overcrowding, as caused by insufficient housing, which we're addressing each year by building new homes, and system inadequacies such as leaks in the system. And so we've had issues with that in the community. As part of the current capital projects, we're going through and addressing all of those leaks. So there's a lot of, there's consumption that isn't being consumed. It's just being lost and we're addressing those problems. Service fees should be based on the actual number of dwellings connected to the communal system as provided by and verified by the city administration, and user fees should be based on the actual metered consumption at the demarcation point, as paid by other system users, which we have not disputed. Service fees are presumably charged to pay the users' fair share of costs of maintaining the entirety of the Canora water and sewer supply and distribution system. Under this agreement, WAN pays for all costs of its system beyond the demarcation point. And as such, in effect, the city is charging for a service that is not fully providing. And then I also wanted to note that numerous homes, in fact, 32, that will be connected to the water system will not in fact be connected to the sewer system. But we've still agreed to follow the bylaw and pay the sewer fees for those homes consistent with your, with your bylaws. Chief, that gives a bit of an overview of kind of where we've gone.
Great, thanks Norm. WAN respects the mandate and accountabilities of the city administration, but have been very disappointed with the strong resistance that we have encountered in engaging in open and respectful dialogue in discussing our constraints, concerns, and position on the matters raised herein. WAN is able to, unable to sign their agreement in its current form for the reasons as stated herein. But the project is near completion, and our leadership are desperate to provide safe drink and water to our citizens and residents, a basic human right and dignity. Previously, city administration have been clear with WAN that we are unable to come to an agreement with them, that our only resource would be to make a deputation to your council, which has led to our request for this meeting. WAN proposes that the city council confirm that this initiative is in fact a historic partnership between the communities and consistent with the city and the country's commitment to reconciliation with indigenous nations and people, and WAN specifically, and ensure that the agreement builds on and is consistent with this foundation. WAN requests that the city council provide a clear mandate and direction to city administration to complete negotiations based on accomplishing a fair and reasonable agreement that sincerely and meaningfully addresses WAN and ISC's concerns raised herein. WAN requests that the city authorize completion of a physical connection slash construction of the water and sewer system while the final MTSA agreement is concluded and executed by the parties. This will allow the contractor to complete their work, commission the system, immobilize and avoid costs associated with remobilizing and completing this final work at a later date. WAN requests that if required, the city and WAN enter into an interim services agreement that will allow services to commence before December 15th, 2019, while a final agreement is being completed and approved by the respective parties. That's all I got, mayor.
Chief Skeed, could we get a, normally we get a copy of the deputation. Would we be able to have that copy? Because then we've got it in front of us and we know what your asks are. We're very clear on that. And then we can deliberate and try to move this forward.
Absolutely. Absolutely, mayor.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or anything, or we're good to? All right. Norm and Chief.
We'll give you a clean line.
Norm and Chief Skeed, thank you very much for bringing it forward and for the clarity of your presentation. And again, I'd like to congratulate you on your success. I know you just had, I know it was an election, but it's more of a reaffirm, reaffirmation of your leadership, so congratulations on that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it on behalf of my community as well. I have a mandate for another two years to focus on a lot of initiatives and obviously this is, will be a big one, absolutely.
Thank you for coming today. All right. So we have two presentations, and both are regarding potential impacts, changes to provincial funding and our budgets. So first up, I'd like to invite Henry, on behalf of the Canora District Service Board, introduce your team, Henry, and we will allow you to move forward. And because this is a presentation, and this is, has major financial impacts to us, take your time, please. In terms of, well, give us the facts, so we're, I didn't see Barry hiding in the back there. Welcome to the chair, the Chair Barry Bolsonson. Henry, could you, go ahead, please.
Thank you through your worship. Thank you for having me here today. And with me have Karine Owen, who's our Director of Finance, and Barry Bolteson, our board chairs here as well. And yeah, probably, you don't want to give me the full time. I've been known to talk.
Is the gentleman that was sitting beside you with you?
Used to be. He switched sides. Yeah. But with, with that said, and in all seriousness, Mr. Jerry or Larry was certainly instrumental in a lot of the work that's taken place at the KDSB when he was the mayor of Suenar and Esther Falls, but also Board Director with our board. And you know, the work that's been started a number of years ago is kind of what's led us here today, and I want to talk a little bit about that today in that, one, I know you got our budget, our draft budget document for next year, probably late last night. And that's because it was just tabled on Thursday, and it was quite, quite a long day of presenting our business plan and our budget. In a year that we're anticipating where there's a lot of changes taking place in terms of changes to program structures, changes to how programs are being delivered, but also changes to how programs are being funded and to what extent. And I want to start off, I'll take a little bit of time just to talk a little bit about how decisions are made at the KDSB in terms of, in regards to our strategic plan. We're into our last year of our strategic plan, and so 2020 will also mark a year where we're going to be diving into a process of developing a new strategic plan. And also considering that our communities have really changed the last five years, especially when we look at mental health and addictions. And I know KDSB, our mandate, one of our core mandates is not to address mental health and addictions. But we do appreciate and recognize that it impacts every aspect that we do, whether it's with childcare, whether it's with reducing poverty, whether it's with addressing housing homelessness, even what we're seeing in regards to emergency medical services, the Land Administration Division. It impacts every aspect that we do, and from that regard, we need to be involved in those discussions, and if need be, we need to take action as well, so that at the end of the day, our communities aren't left shouldering the cost, the financial cost to it. But also, as we heard earlier this morning from parts of the business community, that it's having real impacts on their way of life as well. And as a community, we need to start getting ahead of this in that it's not going to go away with collective action. And as part of our decision-making process, we have five values that every decision that comes across my desk that goes towards a recommendation to our board goes through. And that, number one, is we always put people first. And so, and that includes our staff, that is our community members, that is all stakeholders. That when we make decisions, we evaluate what is the impact going to be? And are we putting people first? Are we putting programs and structure first? And I can tell you, as a result of that, we have made a number of changes over the last five to six years that have really changed how we deliver services, and we have moved to fully integrate a way of delivering services so that when a family comes in for help, it's with childcare, all other aspects are looked at. It's not that they have to figure out how to apply for housing, how to apply, how to access social assistance programs and so forth, that it is one door, but also that behind the scenes that we have a framework of partnerships that we can connect families to. And the other aspect too is that everything we do is in regards to having respect and compassion, and that is a full commitment with regards to our obligation as part of truth and reconciliation. That when we look at delivering programs, developing programs, that we also respect the fact that we have a role to play when it comes to truth and reconciliation. And approaching from a collaboration, that KDSB can't address all of this on our own, that we need to work together. And so are we ourselves structuring ourselves in a way that we can, that it's natural for us to partner, collaborate, whether it's with the city, whether it's with external stakeholders, even as an example with the All Nations Health Partners, where KDSB is an active partner on that, knowing that it is, for a large part of what we're, the challenges we're facing, we need a healthcare strategy to, to address it. And so with that, do we have a way to actually partner with the healthcare sector, share resources? And that it can't just be all on the KDSB, and we can't just simply levy it our municipalities just because we want to do certain projects and see them as, as a priority. And also, do we collaborate with the province inventory and the federal government in addressing some of the unique challenges that we have? And in all that we do, do we actually foster trust? Key component to when we make decisions. And also, do, are we promoting safety and efficiency? And so I talked about it in terms of our restructuring. It hasn't been easy as an organization to really look at how do we deliver services and making difficult restructuring changes to how we deliver programs. And we're continually changeable, and I think it is that approach that has really allowed us, while I'm here today not presenting or defending a significant levy increase to our municipalities, but also we've done our darndest to keep it as close to zero as we possibly can. The other piece I want to mention too is that we have seven guiding principles at the KDSB. And that is when we look at housing programs, it is from a housing-first approach. It is fundamentally how we approach any new housing development, or even looking at evaluating existing housing programs. And the other piece is prevention-oriented. There's no point just putting more paramedics on the streets when we know that that's not sustainable. So what is the root cause? Always looking at our decisions is how do we prevent this from happening in the first place? How do we prevent families from needing community housing in the first place? How do we support seniors from being able to live in the community, die in the community of their choice, rather than to have to leave and just because we don't have the supports here? And also looking at, not just being happy with the status quo, but are we actually innovating? Are we a system leader when it comes to innovation? And I can tell you that when it comes to addressing poverty, we are a leader in the province inventory in terms of new approaches, collaborative approaches when it comes to not just partnerships, developing partnerships with First Nation communities, with indigenous partners, but also looking at having a holistic way of addressing, addressing these matters. And so from that, a number of our staff, as a result of that in recent years, are now sitting on provincial working groups to, so that our best practice can be shared across the province with the other 40, 46 service managers. But then also looking at that we never lose sight of what our core mandate is. It's great to do these, these other prevention programs, but to never lose sight the fact that we need to do well that, that which we're mandated to do. And is it sustainable financially speaking? Is what we're doing sustainable, not just today, but we project five, 10 years from now as communities change, as your financial circumstances change? I know policing isn't our mandate, but I can tell you, we're very much aware of what happens when policing costs go for municipalities. And evaluating that impact when we're looking at making program decisions, or what's happening to enter municipal partnership plan, when there's reductions for that, we know that you're facing challenges as a community in balancing that aspect. And so from that, we need to be very cognizant of, is life sustainable financially in our communities, but also is it sustainable for our municipalities? Are we sustainable for you? And are we developing programs that are inclusive of the entire community? And are we developing programs that are inclusive of the entire community? And then a big piece is communication. Something that we've really added, saying we need to make sure that we communicate effectively, but also very clear with all stakeholders, even though we may not fund a certain organization, particularly the business community, that we have an open line of communication, and also with First Nation communities. So this is where, over the last couple of years, we have a number of memorands of understandings that we've signed, whether it's with Nishnov Yaski Nation or with Canora Chiefs Advisory, saying we need to work together. But the basic, it starts from the basic, and that is to talk to one another and start sharing knowledge and information because we are, we're in this all together. Talking about our budget for next year, there's a couple of things that, as you see the document, I want to also clarify that our budget is going to, it's about just over $62 million for 2020. So it is up by over 6% overall budget from last year. And when we look at overall the impact to the net local share, so that includes the share to our nine municipalities, but also to the territories without municipal organization, referred to as TUMO, that component is going up 0.28%. So we've done our best to keep it at zero and we couldn't quite put it at zero. And as we said, well, a quarter of a percent or just like there above would have to do. And of course, it's the impact assessment distribution that will ultimately change, you know, what municipality pays for what. But as it's standing right now, and if nothing else changes, we're looking at a 1% increase to the municipal sector. And I can tell you that we wouldn't have been able to achieve that had it all set up, if it wouldn't be for some really committed staff that we have. 2019, we had two of our collective agreements that were up for renewal. We began bargaining and we laid it all out and said, here's our reality that we are going to face moving forward, our financial reality. And we had two collective agreements finalized in less than two and a half days with our both our unions. And there's a full recognition as the KDSB, from frontline staff all the way to my position, that we need to be sustainable financially and that we need to do this together. Because one, we don't want to be in a position where a lot of other service managers are in there talking about cuts and job loss. And we're facing this together as an organization. So from that standpoint, I'm incredibly proud for our staff and the fact that we're able to do that. And I'm not suggesting that we got two deals right away because we were sold a farm, quite contrary to that. It just reinforces my belief that when you have all cards on the table, you get the best decision made. And this was a collective decision. Part of, so you look at our overall operating, it is up quite substantially. When you look at, when you hear in the media that there's been significant cuts to various programming, yet KDSB is increasing its budget. And it's for a couple of reasons, and I want to talk to you a little bit about that. And I'll talk about childcare as an example. And within a couple of weeks, KDSB had created 150 new childcare spaces and led by Indigenous organizations without it costing a single penny to the municipal sector. In fact, the way it's structured, it's actually allowed us to reduce the levy for that component to our municipalities, but it's been absorbed by other increases, mainly by EMS. And so I'm proud for that for a couple of reasons. One, we're having final Indigenous-led childcare programs within our communities. Incredibly important from what we heard back from families in all of our communities. But two, that we're able to add that many spaces without there being the financial cost being shouldered by municipalities. And we're not stopping there. Our plan is for 2020 to continue to add childcare spaces. Now, what we're hearing from the business community, what we're hearing from families, that we need more affordable childcare spaces in our communities. Families need it in order to be part of the labor force and also be part of the education system. So from that, we're looking at all ways that we can do that. And also, part of why our costs have gone up, if you want to frame it that way, is that KDSB is also getting to the direct delivery of childcare. When we look to the city of Dryden, the city of Dryden direct delivers childcare and will do so up until the end of December, when it will transition to the KDSB. And so we work with the community in terms of, look, that is the most effective, most efficient delivery model for childcare. And so working through the city for almost a year, we was determined that, no, that by actually bringing it in-house, there are operational savings to it. The city would save substantially and we could actually reinvest those savings into more childcare spaces across the region. And so that's exactly what we're doing. So when you're looking at our staffing increase, there's a significant number of new staff to our complement. But it's as a result that we're taking on additional programs that we're actually bringing in-house so that we can absorb some of the cuts, in particular childcare. That's where we've seen about a 3% reduction in our overall funding from the province. And that is, one, in regards to our all-new childcare expansion programs. And some of these are legacy programs that under the previous government, they were created, they're still deemed as expansion programs, even though they've been existed for a long time and it's a bit misleading. But there is a requirement that municipalities would have to cost share that program by 20% within the next three years. And so instead of waiting for three years, we're moving forward within this budget to implement that over the next three years, doing a third, well, 7% for 2020, 7% for 2021. And then we'll have 6% the following year so that it's not a financial shock to any of our municipalities. But we're also using it as an opportunity to look at, is childcare being delivered in the most effective, efficient way across the region? That, I can tell you, I have no interest in building bureaucracies. It's about getting services, programs right to the front line. The other component too is child and family centers. It is still cost shared 100% by the, well, 0% cost shared by the municipalities, funded 100% by the province. And we've been a bit concerned on that, saying where's the province going on that aspect? And that one, childcare is going to a cost-sharing model. What are the early-on centers going? Because that came over to the KDSB at the beginning of 2018. Because of January 1st, early-on centers were KDSB's responsibility. But we have assurance that those discussions in terms of making municipalities cost share, any aspects of that operations is not on the table with this government. So we're hoping that that is the case. And also, we're adding three new childcare centers, or child and family centers, one being here in Canora as well. And that should be online relatively soon. Looking at social assistance, this includes Ontario Works and a number of employment programs. That is where we did see the most significant cuts in funding. And am I going over time? Do I need to?
No, I was just double-checking something.
Perfect. When we got our funding agreement from the province in regards to deliver social assistance, I can tell you that one just presented to our Board, our Board couldn't accept it. In fact, our Board refused to sign it. Our Board has no intention of, when it comes to helping families out of poverty, to bring them halfway across the ditch. Because they will still be in the ditch. So we either do it full way, or we don't set up families up to fail in the first place. And so from that, that triggered a number of other meetings and renegotiating, renegotiations with the province. And I'm happy to say that not only was our funding maintained, but the province came back with a funding increase for 2020. So from that standpoint, I keep saying that the situations that our communities are facing here in the District of Canora are unique. I agree that poverty exists everywhere else in Ontario, in Canada for that matter. I agree that mental health addictions exist, the challenges exist everywhere else in Ontario. But what makes this region unique, in particular the District, the city of Canora, is at the magnitude in which this community is facing those challenges. That is what's unique. And so from that standpoint, we did have a unique opportunity to make the business case, saying what we had isn't good enough. And that if we can get families out of poverty, it's actually saving in healthcare, it's saving in policing, it's saving in all sorts of other aspects where the province fully benefits from it. And so following that, about two weeks ago, we did have the Director for the Program from the Province and came to Canora, kind of just under the radar, just to really look at what's happening here. And I can tell you, they get it. So from that standpoint, that's why you have, you see an increase in funding for social assistance with the KDSB. And also, what occurred at the Service Hub over the summer and what resulted in its temporary closure, it's going to take a community effort to address homelessness in this community. And it starts by getting people out of poverty in the first place. So that the shelter, the Service Hub, isn't the destination, but it's actually a stepping stone. And I want to use that segment to say we need more housing in this community. And without additional housing, we're going to talk about an increase in homelessness. And so that's where a lot of effort and energy of the last two years has been focused on, how do we get more housing built? And there is more housing being built. One, we have a 28-unit supportive housing program that is as part of a new bail program and an offshoot of the Justice Centre work that's being done in that we know that we need to get people out of the justice system so that they're not on the streets, rearrested, back on the streets and so forth. That there is a way that through education, through supports, we're going to get people on track and having them be in charge of their own life, being able to make decisions for themselves rather than rely on existing systems that are incredibly costly and quite frankly, no human being should have to go through that. The other piece is ensuring that we have the right supports for the 13-unit supportive housing program that is being developed in partnership with Intereverage Housing Services. Construction is set to start as soon as the frost is out of the ground. And the plan is that's completed for next year. And over the last couple of years, we've talked a lot about supportive housing. The shelter has really dominated, I think, headlines in the media as well. But the other piece and discussions that we've had with administration that, and I can tell you that is going to happen, is we're going to be looking to build seniors' housing in this community, and quite a bit of it. And so KDSB, and with support of the city, did submit a seed funding application to the federal government for 54-unit seniors built in this community. The seed funding application was approved about a week and a half ago. So it's going to happen. And that's part of this year's budget too, is that we need to see seniors' housing developed in this community. Because we don't need less, we need more of it. In fact, when you look at the number of seniors that are waiting for affordable housing, for rent-rearred income housing, we have about 238 seniors as of the middle of August. So that's a significant number based on the existing need. And I'm quite proud to be able to really start moving forward with that and for us to be able to actually break ground on that project. The other piece too is where I can say that the budget isn't doing enough, but at the same time, we have a federal government absent from the discussion at this point in time, that is supports in addressing homelessness. And that's something that all of us need to work together on to ensure that we do have appropriate resources, adequate resources, resources that other regions in this country are enjoying to be able to address homelessness that we don't here, especially in the city of Canora when it comes to addressing homelessness. Right now, it is being done by municipalities and by the province of Ontario, that we get zero funding from the federal government. And we know that the resources needed at the Service Hub, more has to come together and there are, but we need a federal partner that has been absent. So you'll see a greater push by the KDSB on that front. We did submit a Reaching Home application so that we can be seen, or be deemed a designated community under the Reaching Home, or used to be the homelessness partnering strategy. We've been shortlisted, we're one of 15 or 16 communities still in the running. So anything that City Council can do to support those efforts, we really appreciate it. So that's where I say our budget isn't doing enough. That is to address homelessness, but we know that we're missing some key partners. And we can't just simply come to municipalities and say, we need to increase your levy to address homelessness. And the last part, in regards to Land Ambulance, that, that's where our largest cost increase to the municipal sector is. In fact, from a housing standpoint, we're actually reducing it by close to $300,000, so $250-some thousand, I think if memory serves me right. But EMS is making that up mostly. And that is, the call volume for not just Canora but across the region is growing at an unsustainable rate. And that, as of last quarter, we're up almost 10 and a half percent across the region over last year. And last year, we had similar numbers, and year before that, we had similar numbers. And so from that, we know that that's not sustainable. But at the same time, we need to have an EMS system that is responsive at all times. And we cannot be in a position where the safety and our response is jeopardized in communities. When somebody has a medical emergency, we need, we should be able to respond. And so through that part of, there'll be an announcement later this morning here in this community, and that is where the province is stepping up and providing KDSB with additional funding so that we can sustain some of these call volume increases to allow other systems enough time to start addressing what's really driving the calls. And so we consider all that, and I think our unique, just how we're structured, we've been able to switch gears with other programs and also be able to absorb things that we can't control. And that is, well, at least from a direct standpoint, the number 911 calls we get. But we do know that by investing in supportive housing, by working together with other community agencies such as police and health, we can curb those costs and those calls as well. What you hear as well in terms of, so we're entering to a partnership with Sunar's Nestor Falls and building a new EMS base in Nestor Falls. And it's a unique partnership whereby the township is going to build it, lease it to the KDSB. So from that standpoint, through this unique partnership, it's actually a very minimal impact to the municipal levy. That one, we have a base that's not suitable anymore, so we're able to make a significant piece of investment, infrastructure investment in the community. And I believe the regional impact cost is about $16,000, $20,000 across the region. So through unique partnerships and working with our municipalities, we can do these things that doesn't result in significant cost. And we're also moving forward in the city of Dryden to build a new EMS base there as well. We're leasing a space from a hospital and that, we've outgrown that space and our lease is up. So we need to look for a new place. And so there's works on the way to build a new EMS base. And again, just through creative partnerships, our goal too is that we can do those, develop the infrastructure in our community. And what is also unique with that project is we're able to take an old dilapidated building that was actually a public safety, tear it down, now build a brand-new piece of community infrastructure without cost always just being passed down to the municipal sector. So I'm going to stop there, answer any questions that you might have. I will say, tough budget year, but we've been able to keep it close to zero. And so from that, I'm very proud of our Board and just their steadfastness in supporting some of the initiatives and also to our staff as well, for us to be able to make this happen.
Thanks, Henry. Does anybody have any question? Counselor McMillan?
Just, I guess a comment, Henry, if I may, and I wanted to just take the time to look at the budget. Did you get it read?
Yeah.
Also, I just request appreciation for the efforts of the KDSB in addressing the budget. Because we're all industry partners, and we all contribute to the program, to the project. But I think your financial, I hear you, that these costs are paid in a way that's, I'm on it. Because there is one back there, and municipal is probably a huge challenge. Thank you for the efforts of the Board.
Counselor Smith?
Thanks, Henry. I always impressed you, moving in the KDSB, you're making a real contribution in our community. community. And you know, we check that, you know, the... You're the best, and I always thank you. It's just, when you're... It's a county, you're a candidate, and I...
Correct, same as municipalities.
That's why I really appreciate it. When I look at the... And I guess I'm trying to make sure, I'm like, yeah, because I'm looking at how much determine, what a percentage of their budget is funded, and I know that it's based on the impact assessment, but what's the funding standard?
One second? Please.
So, KDSB uses the unwinned impact assessments. We receive from impact these assessment values for all of the nine municipalities and the four TUMO areas. We then take anything that is exempt out of that impact assessment, and we run the total number, and we figure out how much of that total nature of the municipality is included. That's the calculation in the...
So, just further to that, Karen, because I'm trying to compare that with...
So there's some things that are different with land ambulance, but... That's true. Land ambulance treats the TUMO portion as a grant. So instead of it being applied after the fact, we actually do a special calculation. We get us the light more, we get slightly more in the TUMO amount because of it. It is a very complicated calculation. I can go through it if you do, but...
So, we do the same thing with weighted assessment with the impact to determine our calculation also.
Who's being our?
Do you use the word "help"?
No, so, I'm, yeah.
Okay, because that's per capita, I believe, too.
Okay, so my question is, when I look at the public health, and that's all I can compare it to, is then we look at the 70-30 split in funding. So I guess that's what I'm trying to find out from the KDSB, if we have, if it's similar.
Got some questions?
And you know what? You can come back, and, because I know it's not a simple question, and I'm actually looking for a simple answer. So, and we can discuss that, yeah. So if we can discuss that further, because I'm trying to wrap my head around that. Thanks, Karen.
Your worship. If I could, each program is funded differently. So when we look at social assistance, the delivery of it, so the case management, the staffing piece, is, in theory, cost shared 50-50 with the province of Ontario based on a set amount per case. Across our region, we found that actually our municipalities are having to contribute more just because of the need in our region. EMS, as an example, whatever, the total budget, TUMO gets taken off the top as a grant, but we also deliver EMS service to some 17, 18 different First Nation communities, so there's a different component. There's a First Nation Adjustment Funding piece, there's a First Nation Per capita piece. And so through that, that funding model is actually quite unique for that program. Housing, depending on which part we're talking about, if we're talking about homelessness and prevention, it is predominantly funded by the province. We talk about legacy programs like our nonprofits, like Canora nonprofit as an example, so forth, but bulk of housing is funded through municipalities. So, the mayor tells you that the province and beds are equal partners with regards to housing funding, it's wrong. They're not. In fact, our municipalities, it's over 70% of the cost for housing is paid for by the net local share. Childcare, the province pays a greater portion of it, where they're now looking at making some of the programs be cost shared, 2080, that's where they're going to. And also on the administration piece, they're looking at moving from a 10% to a 5% that is cost shared. So, initially, that was a concern for us, but we really restructure in terms of that. I'm a big believer that we shouldn't, we shouldn't be using more than 5% for any program we have for administration for the delivery of it. And so from that standpoint, we're quite insulated. But I do want to highlight in terms of, over the last, let's say, four years, in 2017, the share that the municipalities had over the net local, the nine municipalities, was about 17.9%. So of the local share came from municipal sector. In 2020, in this budget, it's 13%. So we've done all we can to really restructure programs and to also really push and challenge Ontario on ensuring that the right taxpayer is paying for a certain program delivery. And so from that standpoint, by all intents and purposes, we were hoping for a levy decrease, but the changes that have occurred, we're able to keep the levy the same. And so I know it's not the same as a decrease, but that's what we're actually working towards. And just to ensure that, particularly how uniquely situated our region is, that there's a lot of geographical boundaries and jurisdictional boundaries that need to be balanced when it comes to program and service delivery, and why we believe it's essential to our well-being and doing proper service delivery that we do program delivery in many cases in partnership with First Nations, just given the makeup of our communities and also that our communities are fairly transient, too, in terms of individuals accessing services.
Thanks, Henry. And anybody else? Counselor Correa?
Yeah, so I guess I have a little bias here, because I'm a director on the KDSB. So I was at the meeting last Thursday, and the one thing that struck me, and it does to any organization that has worked many decades that I've been following the public sector, your ability to follow the strategic plan in the budget process, because that's what drives the budget. And I saw it time and time and time again as we were going through several hours of the budget presentation, but I just wanted to acknowledge that because, you know, I know it's tough times, but following the strategic plan and your values, you made a guiding principle, you have a variety of components as part of the strap plan, you follow them, and that's what makes a good organization. So I just want to acknowledge that, and, because again, I'm a director of the District Service Board, and if we come forward, having each, I mean, I follow this, this plan, so I thank you, because that makes my line, the job of the director, much easier, moving forward, so thank you.
All right, Henry. One thing that resonated with me in the article last week was the fact that you acknowledged it was a difficult budget here, and as much as we tend to, you know, people say it's council or it's the senior leadership team and it works with you, that, you know, you really seem to evolve based on the situations, you know, the opportunities, you're constantly bringing forth good ideas, and because of that, I see success in the programs still. And it really hit me when I, I believe Counselor Correa, Adam and I attended, where all the municipalities came to Dryden, and we heard all the positive things were happening in all the communities in terms of money reinvested, and the fact that the municipality really realize, or it has a bearing on the impact municipalities. And I think as a council, knowing how it affects us ultimately in the budget process, recognizing that our external organizations don't have control over everything, but the fact that you, board and your team is doing everything they can to try and make that, you know, best for everybody from a financial, will still provide us great services, so thank you for that. All right? So, again, thank you very much. Are you heading to an announcement now?
In a couple of minutes.
Yeah, and we will see, are you rejoining us later today?
I am, yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time, and I do believe this is, these types of sessions are really important, and also for the public as well, to hear the work that we're doing, and that, you know, we're not just about homelessness, I mean, that it's really, it's kind of what we're known for in the community, and people don't realize that when anybody drops their child off at childcare in this community, that's actually funded by the KDSB. That the fact that it's affordable in the community, it's the fact that we spend, I think in this year's budget, it's 6.8 million in childcare funding through the regions, just so that we know affordability is critical. And I also just want to acknowledge, thank you for the, thanks. But I would say, I think I'd be very selfish if I just took them to myself, that without our team at the KDSB, I'm just a figurehead, that's it. We have an incredible group of staff that, what I'd say, in terms of having a strong strap line, is they know why they come to work in the morning, and that is critical, in that we have staff that aren't afraid of change, who do things differently, knowing why it is that we exist and that we're here to serve and support our communities. And so from that, I will, I will take the thanks and actually just pass it on to our staff, because it's really, it resulted their hard work, that's great, to do what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that leads us in, we're, presentation from Northwestern Health Unit. We welcome CEO Marilyn Herbach, and with Marilyn today is Chair Paul Ryan. Paul is with us from Fort Frances, and Paul is not only the chair, he's a former council with the city of Fort Frances. Oh, I'm sorry.
And Jerry.
I did not realize you were part of the board, so welcome. Former Mayor of Sulica.
If I represent him, Nora.
And, really, Counselor Smith always takes all the acknowledgements. So welcome you all, and Marilyn, and I don't know if Paul and Jerry are going to contribute, or if Jerry will be as great. Yeah, Heather's kind of our techie person, so, yes.
Just take a couple of minutes.
Yeah, we'll take a couple-minute break while they're getting set up. That's okay, Marilyn.
Are we having a break? Yes. Oh, no, yes, okay. I was going to run to the... Yes, sir, excuse me. Thank you.
You hurry up, please. I got something to show you later. You got a driver and everything?
I do.
All right. Marilyn, welcome, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Marilyn Herbach, and I'm the CEO for the Northwestern Health Unit, and I'm here with Paul Ryan, who is our board chair, and Jerry O'Leary, who is a former mayor for Sooneros and is on our Board of Health. So thank you very much for having us today. We're going to talk a little bit about public health modernization, and we're going to try to address some of the questions that I believe council may have regarding our funding and the new cost shared, or the revised cost shared model that is coming forward. Next slide, please. So in this presentation, we're going to look at a couple of areas of the Health Protection and Promotion Act. One is the duty of the Board of Health, and the other is Section 72, which explains the payments of obligated municipalities. And then we're going to look at the financial implications as it results, as it results to municipalities, and some numbers that would be specific to the city of Canora. And then we're going to look at a short video that one of our managers put together, because I think it's really important to understand the value of public health in our communities and what the economic impacts may be if we didn't exist. So I'd like to have Paul Ryan come up. He's going to speak to a couple of slides.
Yeah, I'll just go through some of the legislation that we live under and some of the commitments we have, as well as municipalities. So I'm not going to read these to you, because I know when I sat at a table similar to this and a person came up and just read his slides, I know how boring that is. I'll let you do the reading. This is the Health Promotion and Protection Act, so we are legislated and mandated by this act to carry out the programs that are laid out by the next slide, which is the health protection, or the public standards. So they both tell us that we must provide these programs and services to our communities, and that includes all of health units, 35 of them across this province. They all live under the same mandated legislation. So our Board of Health is an autonomous corporation under the Health Protection Promotion Act, and is the legal authority for the organization. Board members act in a position of trust for their community and are responsible for the effective governance of the organization. The Board upholds provincial legislation governing the mandate and operation of the Board of Health under the Health Protection Promotion Act, the Municipal Act, and other legislations that reference Boards of Health. As such, under Section 4, every Board of Health shall superintend, provide, and ensure the provision of the health programs and services required by this act and the regulations to the persons who reside in the health unit served by the Board, and shall perform such other functions as are required by or under this or any other act. The Board is accountable to the community for ensuring that the health needs are addressed by appropriate programs and ensuring that the Northwestern Health Unit is well-managed, and that the Board shall establish policies which govern the operation of the Northwestern Health Unit, including approving budget and the Boards of Health. Next slide. Now, this is the one where, this is taken out of the HPPA, where the payment is obligated by the municipalities, and it's a copy from the HPPA that shows that responsibility of the obligated municipalities is to fund the health unit. Now, this is quite a departure from the provincial obligation. Any funds that any health unit received from the province for any of the programs that were mandated to do is considered to be a grant. There's no legislation, there's nothing written in the HPPA, Municipal Act, or any of them that says that the province has to fund a certain amount or whatever. It's a grant. So we always have these balls in there, because we never know if the grant is going to come or not. Now, Mr. Ford just recently made changes to the grant, and he can do that just by saying so. He doesn't have to legislate it. He could, I don't know if many of you ever lived through the Harris regime in 1996, '97, when Harris just said out of the blue, "We're out of the business. We are not funding public health in this province any further." And that was the day that municipalities across this province paid 100% of everything. New governments came in and it inched back to the 75, 25, and also the 100% that we have today. Now, Ford has just made a, tore a little bit of a page out of Harris's book, and went with the 70-30 that we will come to in 2021. So it's just a kind of an overview of where we, where we are legislated-wise and where you are as well. And the province, of course, is, it's a grant, they can do what they want with us. So we always live under that, and we're very conscious of that all the time as we do our budgets and we go through everything to make sure that we're going to make it if our grant is cut by one or two percent, not 30. Like, you just can't handle that. It's, it's similar to the Harris regime, and we have to live with it. So I'll turn it back to Marilyn, and then I'll have a few more comments. Oh, I'm sorry, I got yours now.
It's okay. Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Next slide. So what do we know? So we know that effective January 1st, 2020, that the cost shared will be changed from 75, 25 to a 70, 30. We also know that at this time, that the ministry or their budgets, they don't actually have their budgets approved until April, which means that the Northwestern Health Unit's budgets aren't due to be submitted to the ministry until February 28th. So we're just working on our budgets right now, and that is the reasons why a lot of the things that we're talking about are purely estimate. Right now, when I had a meeting with the ministry last week, they're looking at three data sets to determine what our base funding will be next year. So they're looking at Q3 from 2018, they're looking at our 2018 settlement, and they're looking at our 2019 Q3 report. So as you can imagine, when you have ministries or funding agencies looking at quarterly reports that are three-quarters through the year, and you don't have your last quarter spent, and they're making decisions on what your base funding is going to do based on that information, it is a pretty unsettling place to be. So unfortunately, the things that we know and we're discussing with our municipalities are purely projections that are based on information that the ministry has given us. So what they've told us is that the new cost shared or the revised cost shared model does not include 100% programs such as unorganized territories grant, MOH compensation, indigenous partnerships, and, sorry, dental for seniors program. So those programs will remain 100% funded. The rest of the 100% funded programs that we had are now being brought into the cost shared model, which is the biggest portion that municipalities are going to be burdened with. That is about $2.4 million that was previously 100% paid by the province, and that is outside of what municipalities were already contributing, under a mandatory and a cost shared related programming. We also know that they have done a pause and that they were going to move the funding formula change to April 1st, 2019. So they have paused and are moving that now to January 1st, 2020. They've also indicated that they will provide transitional funding to health units to support municipalities. So our estimated amount is $900,000 that they would give us up to. Now, again, that depends on what base funding they determine we are going to be approved with. And then for 2020, we expect by 2021, the estimated cost to municipalities of our 19 municipalities will be $1.1 million. And we recognize that this is a significant amount for municipalities to take on, and that it will be very difficult to achieve under the financial pressures that you already are in. And we'd like to let you know that we do try to do everything that we can within our budget. Outside of the cost that is going to be downloaded to municipalities, Northwestern Health Unit will still have to try to find cost savings, depending on what formula they use to determine our base. And it could be up to $300,000. So that is extremely significant. And it is going to take a lot of number crunching and planning on how we're going to do that. And I'm going to tell you in a little bit how we've started that process and what that looks like. One of the things that I wanted to mention was the reason the government paused on a lot of the dates for moving things forward were because municipalities and the Northwestern Health Unit went to speak to our MPP, Minister Greg Rickford. We told him what this was going to mean to our municipalities and to our public health unit. We sent a letter to Minister Elliott. We had a couple of letters from our municipalities in support of our health unit. We're very fortunate that we have two members sitting on technical tables at the provincial level. And we are able to talk about the northern perspective and the impacts directly to the north, because they are very different. That is what is happening in the southern parts and the southern health units. And then we also have the Association for Public Health Agencies, which is called Alpha. They are lobbying the government on the provincial changes, as well as AML, who you would be familiar with as a municipal organization. I'd like to also bring to your attention and speak that the Northwestern Health Unit has not increased its levy for seven years. And in fact, for three years, in 2013, 14, and 15, we paid rebates back to our municipalities in total of $373,900. And that was because we had a surplus position and we were sending money back out of our mandatory programs to the province. And municipalities were entitled to their share to get back as well. We did have some questions from your council. And I just wanted to know, to let you know, some of the things that we are doing to try to reduce some costs in the health unit. So this year, we took our benefit plan to market. And we've actually been successful, and we've changed benefit providers. Total cost savings for that is expected to be $180,000, which is very significant for a mirrored plan. So that was really great that we were able to achieve that. We are looking at adjusting our capital purchase replacement dates. So we're going to be moving for four-year replacement to five-year replacement. And what that means is that if you think about computer purchases and computer replacements, we will be buying less computers and spreading the lifetime over a longer span. We review each one of our budget lines annually. And as you know, the city of Canora is probably in the same position. Staffing and benefits are the biggest part of our budget. So being able to navigate that and still maintain operating that is sufficient for the programming to get done is always a challenge that we have to face. Some of the other things, we have people that are retiring. We have people that are leaving the organization for different reasons. And we are looking through attrition on how we need to either replace or not replace those jobs. So those are things that we are doing, because we do not want to decrease any of our services within our communities. Another question that came up was how is the 46% determined? And that was in the communique that we had sent out to the municipalities last week. And that, again, is a number that is coming directly from the province, and it won't be determined on the actual percentage increase until we know what our base budget is. If the CAO or any of the finance people would like to have a more detailed conversation with me on what numbers are looking like, we're then willing to come and sit with you anytime, have some conversations on our approaches and what our numbers are looking like. I know another thing that's always coming up is comparison to other sectors and other fields. And I really like to stress that we can't speak to other sectors' funding models. And we don't know how they do their business. So we can only speak on our own behalf. And I'd just like you to know that we are very cautious and we are very financially accountable. And we make sure that that is one of our priorities. We do have an executive committee who is a risk management committee. Everything goes through that committee and then is brought forward up to the board level. Next slide, please. So here's a little bit about impact to the city of Canora. So we know that in 2019, that there is a zero increase to your levy. And we know that because in 2020, we're going to be getting funding from the ministry to support the transition, that the increase to your levy would be $56,683. Now, in 2021, the full impact will happen. And that will be an increase of $254,633. So that is extremely significant. The thing that I need to suggest is that if you have issues, that you directly approach a provincial leads and counterparts. The only way municipalities can make a difference to significant changes like this is by leveraging your provincial governments. I don't know who you speak to in the work that you do at a provincial level, but this is the level that you have to come to. I think we tried to show today that it is very difficult for us to achieve cost savings, especially for municipalities, because for every 70 cents that the ministry provides us in base funding, the expectation is through legislation that municipalities pay their share. So I'm hoping that if there's advocacy to be done, that you go to your provincial level, you make the storm there. That is where it is needed. Greg Rickford has been a really good, somebody for us to speak to. I hear at all the meetings that I go to, wherever he's at, that he is a very big voice for the north, and he does bring our concerns forward. So advocating through those kind of avenues are probably the best way to make a dent in these kind of changes. Next slide, please. So the last council meeting, I believe, Councilor Smith brought forward some numbers. And I just wanted to kind of go through those and kind of clarify what the intent was and what those looked like. So this is what would have happened if the government hadn't paused and hadn't provided any transitional funding to your municipalities. You would have seen by the end of it, the cost would have been $545,526. And that is because the change would have happened in year in 2019. So some of the things that Mr. Rickford did is he went and he said, "It doesn't make sense to, when a municipality has a budget, to make a shift like this in year." AML said the same thing, and so did Alpha. So they switched the timelines of that change. And then you'll see, overall, by 2020, it would have been the 311, 729 is what you won't see until 2021. So I hope that slide makes sense, and I'd be happy to answer questions for it after I'm finished. I'd also like to mention that we sent a little bit of an attachment in our communique, which was a news relief released by Minister of Affairs Steve Clark. He announced that Queens Park would offer $143 million across municipalities, sorry, four provinces across, four municipalities across the province. I'm sorry. To lower costs and to improve services. Now, I can't really speak to that. It was just like, for me, it was a possible avenue for the municipalities to take to try to get some additional funding. That is not something I can do in public health for you. But I would recommend that if you don't already know what those kind of applications look like for increased funding, that maybe that's something that you can look into. So hopefully, he's going to be true to his word here and will provide funding that will help you to achieve lower costs through some of the sectors that you're going to be having increases in. Next slide, please. So just want to reiterate again, because it's really important for people to understand the value of public health, that for every dollar that is invested in immunizing children, $16 is saved in healthcare. $1 invested in a booth seat saves $40 in avoidable medical costs. $1 in fluorinated water saves 38 in dental. So this is what you would see as an economic impact should public health not do their work. And again, public health's work is silent until things start going bad. Last week, we had the pleasure of attending an Alpha conference, and we had a speaker that was very powerful there. He spoke about immunization from the time of the plague, back in the 1700s or something like that. And his presentation was extremely powerful on, you know, when public health started immunizing and doing their initiatives, the actual direct cost in population. And it was pretty amazing to see that presentation. I wish I could share it with you. It was very powerful. And then another thing that I'd like to suggest that we do when we're looking at our budgets is we're always looking at our travel. Because of our huge geographic area, you must know that travel for us is very costly. So what we've been doing is we've been asking staff, managers, to schedule their travel, travel together as much as possible, so we don't have one-off people traveling alone. We've been able to reduce our inter-office mail costs through that same kind of an avenue, where we have staff that are traveling from office to office, actually delivering our mail, rather than sending it through the post office. And then we've also done a lot through integration and partnerships. Henry spoke a little bit about the partnerships and stuff and the successes that he's had through the Canora District Service Board. And I want to suggest that we do the same thing at the Northwestern Health Unit. This year alone, when HAC actually paid for one of our positions for somebody who was on a one-time funded grant that didn't get approved in 2019, when HAC came through, saw the value, and was going to actually fund us to the end of the year until we could see if we could find other ways of keeping that individual. So again, there's things like this that we're doing. In 2019, the Northwestern Health Unit was approved $1.24 million for an indigenous partnership engagement. So what is that going to do? We know that in public health, we have been working in building relationships with indigenous partners for multiple years. So what we will be able to do now that it's base funding is we will actually be able to move some of our FTE into that funding, which will give us some relief in our other programs for cost share and help us to achieve our cost savings that we need to, potentially up to $300,000. I'd like to just play a little video, if I have time, just again, to just show Donna Stanley is our manager of infectious disease. And she's just going to talk a little bit about the importance of immunization and what her team has been doing to make sure that they are actually hitting the priority populations. And hopefully, you'll find it in there. And hopefully you'll find it interesting. So, what Donna was trying to explain here is the importance of immunization and even the flu, if you think about it. Being able to shift her priorities from immunizing everyone and leaving pharmacies to do the people that were less vulnerable really made a big difference in her program. And then finally, I just wanted to say that globally vaccines save about six hundred and eighty-five lives per hour. In fifteen minutes of me speaking here, a hundred and seventy lives would have been saved. And then Paul just has one more inter-what?
Yeah, I'd just like to give you a little snapshot of what we've been doing over the past seven years in order not to increase the municipal levy. And we're quite proud of this, and I think we should be. I think if we looked up all of the uncontrollable costs of the city of Kenora over the past seven years and looked at the increase in those costs and compared them to the increase of the Health Unit, which was zero, I'd be pretty proud of it. And there's just a few things of what we've done. We had a layer of, I guess, a kind of a semi bureaucracy of directors that we have eliminated over the past well, not through firings, but through attrition and buyouts, et cetera. And that saved six hundred grand right there. Invested in a new phone system and cut our monthly charges in half. Invested in technology to increase efficiencies and cut costs. Increased usage of Skype and teleconference meetings to decrease travel costs. Upon some retirements, we've shared those duties out to other people at that position and not hired a new hire. And then this is a good one, approved a policy that reserves would be held for two months' operational costs. With any amounts over the threshold would be rebated back to the contributing municipalities in the same manner in which it was collected. And I think Marilyn just mentioned about rebates that we've been given. So we're not building a war chest of your money in our reserves. Two months, that's it. So, when something like this happens and the province decreases their grant, we can't just go into our reserves that we've built up because we haven't done that and to soften the blow or anything. We outsourced by ten of the benefits, yeah, that was a hundred and eighty-six thousand. And we make sure that any non-mandated programs that the Health Unit may become involved in are one hundred percent funded by provincial grants and in no way have any involvement with the municipal levy funds. And we're also looking at our capital expenditures. We've extended our life of our computers by a couple of years. Eliminated some printers, you know, and that's only a few bucks, but it all adds up. So we've been trying our darndest and we will continue to do so. And we're very proud of that fact. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Marilyn? So now it's question. So, I had a number of questions before and through the presentation and Paul's remarks, you kind of addressed some. So, the one that Paul just brought up at the end was mandated versus non-mandated programs. And whether it was misinformation or misunderstanding, I always, I wasn't sure if there were any programs that were not mandated. So Paul kind of alluded that there are some programs that you do that are not mandated.
So...
But they're fully funded.
Yeah, so... The Ministry of Health is not our only funder. So we get funding from the Minister of Community and Children's Services. And that funding is for our Healthy Babies, Healthy Children Program, our Speech Language and Infant Hearing Program, for our Student Nutrition Program. And those are a hundred percent funded. The Northwestern Health Unit also fills out grants and funding requests from different individual agencies which bring in little smaller pots of money. So our other income is about nine hundred thousand dollars and that is for anything that is not mandatory.
Okay. One thing I'd like to comment, you talked about advocacy. So last year, we went to AML. KDSB, I think, had twelve deputations with different ministries recognizing that they cover a huge gamut. And they brought the municipalities in to some of those meetings to support them. They prepared all the information and what they were looking for, you know, how it could benefit the communities, the impacts. And because we're basically a year out here where it's really going to hit us. So, are the health units collectively bringing this forward to the provinces? And secondly, how do we, as municipalities, originate those meetings when we go to Toronto or Ottawa? Will the health unit, because I look around the table here, the three representatives, you all have municipal experience, you've all been at those tables. So, can the health unit ask for deputations, send people, and then bring in, because the majority of municipalities are going to be there, that we come in as support? And I'm not asking for an answer right now, but is that something that the board could consider? Right?
So, is that something that, like, we are an autonomous board and there are other health units that are not, that are directly linked to municipalities? So I think you would have seen possibly some of those health units and municipalities going together?
I never saw any health units go down.
Oh, okay.
I'm using the example of KDSB.
Okay.
That went there, you know, they're not a municipality, they make deputations, but they brought in their municipal partners for support to show the impact on all our communities.
I can absolutely look into that, Dan.
I would, I think that would, because Counselor Smith, some comes back and says, you know, we need to do this, we need to do that. But the fact is, if I go to, or any of us around the table go to these meetings, we don't have the facts, we're not knowledgeable. Whereas if it's led by the health unit, but the municipalities are there as support, I think we'll have greater success.
Okay.
So I'd like to set something for you to consider. Counselor McMillan?
Just a couple of, excuse me, a couple of things, you know. First off, follow-up on what Dan is saying, and I know Sharon brings back as much information as she can and is a strong advocate for the table. With some of the information Paul and Marilyn you're talking about with respect to your advocacies and your Alpha Group and this sort of thing, the issues you face with the province and with all due respect to your comment, then you may not be the right organization to request a meeting with AML. But even sharing of some of this information that you're advocating for a reduction in cost, even sharing that communication with the municipalities, I think would be helpful over and above what we already receive. Like some of the presentations that can be shared, like I would realize that there may not be. And my other comment in listening to the presentation, I think some of my questions have been answered or addressed to give me food for thought. But Marilyn, looking at the two charts you had on the overhead, you're not going to know your full impact of what your offsetting cost will be until probably March, I think, or November. So even when you say nine hundred, I don't know if I got my figures right, when you say nine hundred thousand dollars, that could be the cost per year in 2020. Twenty twenty, you're not really going to know that. Whereas the municipalities, we're already in our flow of formulating our budgets and looking at impacts and what they potentially can be, so we've got to...
Yeah. I understand. So what...
Which makes it difficult for...
So what we do is, at our November board meeting, we pass what our municipal levies are going to be for the following year. So in November, we will pass the municipal levy at the board and we will be suggesting that the difference would be the two hundred thousand. Can, you know, actually say, and the ministry is telling us 1.1 million impact. They're saying they're going to give us nine hundred thousand, up to nine hundred thousand for transitional. Two hundred thousand dollars is left, which will be the increase to the levy for 2020. And that is the best guess that we can have right now. And because our, like I said, like our year ends don't align, our budgets don't align, it makes it very difficult for us to actually bring things forward. And I know if that, in July, we get an approved budget and it is less than, we would absolutely switch, like revise our levy for the balance of the year. Typically, what happens is the ministry actually presents their budget by the end of March to their upper powers. And then we submit our budget end of February. Their budget is approved in about April or May. And then at that time, they start looking at a public health budget. So it's usually not until the end of July by the time we get an approved budget from them.
It hasn't, it's late into November.
Yeah. So, we usually operate based on our amending agreement from the prior year because they keep flowing us money on a monthly basis based on that amount. And then as soon as our budgets are approved, they claw it back if we have a reduction.
Counselor Corey?
So I, Marilyn, I have a question around, like I always get nervous when I hear about see transitional funding. Because we know something is going to happen at some point in time. So is the transitional funding as a result of the cost share, like the five percent? Or is the government still looking at, I know that you're talking about reducing the number of health units from, I think it was thirty-four, thirty-five to ten or twelve or whatever it was. Is this all part of it still or are they just stopping at the cost sharing?
So right now, they are stopping at the cost sharing piece. We have a special advisor, Mr. Jim Pine, who's been assigned to do consultations with boards and municipalities. That means that there will still be movement. We will still be reducing the number of health units in the province. We still will be going through modernization. It's just that, right now, they're taking a pause so that they can make sure that they have all of the facts before they do that.
The one thing that I'm sticking to is the front of the budget. That is not emotional, but I have a staff. Transitional, which came along, I believe, because they took a step back.
Yeah, so my comment back to the provincial government, because I, you know, I'm here to represent the district and people that, you know, in the community. But maybe at some point collectively, all the municipalities in the province, all the health units, just consider the government, we're not funding this, 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 and this because we're not paying for it. At some point, we can allocate, and I know Greg Rickford's done an awful lot to help the situation. But obviously, someone in Toronto who's shifting numbers around this listening. And as far as I'm concerned, municipalities should not be funding, you know, a larger portion than the provincial government for public health. That is true, not be mandated in municipalities. And I think at some point, we need to stop going around being nice and paying taxes or whatever and put a ban on the provincial government because someone's going to have to start listening. We can't keep raising tax rates here because they think they're doing a good thing. All they're doing is shifting the burden from their level and they say, well, we're saving money. And shifting it on to a local taxpayer and that's not doing any good. So I just, that's what I advocate when I see Minister Rickford and anybody else who... Well, I was around when Harris was... So anyhow, that's my own comment. Thank you.
Counselor Ben Wolliam?
Marilyn, you had mentioned about that transitional funding here in the province. Minister Clark, Mary Bean, that seemed to find deficiencies. Do you imply that municipality would get that, that shouldn't be the element?
It is a municipal, from what I understand, and I touched the link to the Communicate. So what it said, that Steve Clark announced, instead of acting on a menu of possible sweeping changes, Greens Park instead would offer up to a hundred and forty-three million for municipalities across the province to find new ways to lower costs and improve services. The hundred and forty-three million in funding would be open to all four hundred and forty-four of Ontario municipalities, the government said. I added this because I wanted to ensure municipalities were aware and expect that you will be able and need to apply for the funding directly through the province and it is not related specifically to public health.
Sure, Karen. Counselor McCollum?
I just, I'm trying to make a little last comment. I thought your respect was been shared, Marilyn, from all areas of the health unit, the impact of the health unit, understanding that it's still down the road, we're looking at reducing it for health units in the province and that's still there. But I can't emphasize enough, and I was around it, sitting at this table during the Harris cuts call and when you were... It has a very significant impact on municipalities as well because we have to, I believe, everything, we have to... It's not a creative position for us. It almost sounds like a broken record, but each year is getting covered. The reality is, each year is different. For taxes, for the taxpayer. And I agree more with Andrew when he said, "We should be going to the province and talking." But I think collectively, we have to do that. It's work, because we have to work, we're not saying you're not safe, Marilyn. But that's key and I also wondered, and I don't think anybody can answer it at this point, what the future impact of it is going to be of the Ontario health units that are under construction right now and what's that going to look like as the limits become obsolete? And what's the possibility for RV in the area? So, to me, in summary, it's, this is a very tough one and very significant impact. I appreciate that you're looking at things within your budget and I just encourage you to please continue doing it because we do it every year. Appreciate that, so thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and I fully agree with Counselor Correia's comments about the downloading of services onto municipal taxpayers that we shouldn't be paying. In my opinion, we should not be paying those costs. There was just an announcement last week by Ford that he's going to bring some legislation forward. And I think what he may be intending to do with that is, look at the HPPA, with an eye of reducing some of the mandatory programs that we have to deliver. So that may make a difference in our funding model, though I don't know what his intent is.
When I read the article, I felt that the intent was that they were going to be able to push things forward through legislation within one day. And I didn't get a sense that it was that they were going to try to move any programming around under the Health Promotion Protection Act. In any of the meetings I've been to with the province and/or any of the technical tables, one of the things was very clear from the ministry was that they're not interested in opening up the HPPA. They've just done a review in 2018. It took them three years to get there and they're not interested in opening it up again at this time.
So what that means, what I guess Marilyn was saying in the presentation is, it's a health shop. You're going to deliver those programs. You can't get out of delivering those programs and as Marilyn said, the ones that aren't mandatory are funded otherwise than the municipality. So, back to your comment, Mayor Dave, about...
Pardon?
I keep doing that to you, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Mayor Dan's comments about...
It's okay, Counselor, thanks, Stan.
So, back to those comments about the health units coming and advocating at AML and that. I think we have to be very clear, and you can help me out here, is when Paul references the grants to municipalities for costs, is we always worried that they would do that, like they did in the Harris years. So what they're doing is they're pulling provincial funding that they used to pay for and downloading on the backs of municipalities. Not on the health units, per se, but onto municipalities. That's why the lobby has to come from the municipality because the costs, in my opinion, are being downloaded onto the municipality. So I'm not sure if that makes any sense, but that's what we're, you know, up against. It's, they're actually, it's a download onto the municipalities. We're going to have to bear those costs.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I agree with Rory and Andrew. This is something that we have to do in partnership together with the municipalities and that if there's a way for us to do that, we can try to find, you know, what that process looks like because it's not... looks like, because it's not one that I'm familiar with. If you can help me to do that as well, I would appreciate it, because I don't really know getting on the AMO delegation list for the province. I'm not sure what that looks like, but we can try to figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing us today.
Paul for coming up from Fort Frances. And Jerry?
I'd like to make one comment. I couldn't reach to the top too long.
No, I'm surprised it's taken this long.
I do represent the city of Kinnoro on the Health Board, and also the suburb of Sooners, Mr. Falls. Panfield was always trying to amalgamate or steal our tax base down there. But I do, and the fact that I was on council for a few years, when I go to a public health board meeting, I really cannot take my municipal hat off. It's always there, and so consequently, I'll always be fighting to keep costs in municipalities at a minimum. They're modernizing public health. They're using great language. Consistency, equity, improved clarity, alignment, responsibility, in the hallway practices, and so on and so on. They're great words. I don't know what they mean, but they're wonderful, absolute wonderful lingo. The bottom line is, though, the nice part about it is, they're not telling us how to do it. They're leaving the how to us within our organization where the expertise is, because nobody knows better about the public health in Kinnoro, Rainy River, Mr. Falls, and Sooners, other than the people in the health, in our best and health. So that's the nice part about all of this. Andrew advocacy, you know what, you're going to lead the charge, we're all going to get thrown in jail. But the bottom line is, if you watch TV, education, they have public announcements out there. There was a teacher on last night complaining about the cuts in education. There's cuts in everything. Our funding has been cut back. Yeah, we have to be, we have to, but where do we do it? Do we do it at Queen's Park? Are we doing it in the public paper? So everybody knows about it. That's the question I think we need to answer, but we definitely need your support. The health unit has proven itself for years. The levy, they've been working diligently to keep it at, and that is because you got people like her, they're complaining about taxes and what, and I understand that, and that's fair. And that makes our staff work harder to keep the cost in a minimum. But as your representatives, I will, I will not take my municipal hat off, and I will continue to do what I can for you guys to start the taxes.
So when Counselor Smith's municipal hat falls off, could you reach over and put it back on for us, please?
Oh, you know the nature of the beast.
All right, thank you all for coming in today.
Thank you very much. Oh, one more thing. Hey, listen, thank all of you guys for doing what you do. I'd forgotten, but for doing what you do, your payback to your community is wonderful. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Unfortunately, you can't vote for it. All right. So we still have a lot of work to do here. We're going to stop at 10:02 so everybody can get a break, can get prepared for the official planning meeting at noon. So we will forge ahead then with item 1.1, the 2019 capital and unusual spend. Charlotte, are you leading this one?
Hi, I'm John. I'm having a cycling seminar and I think, so please let me do all the detail work on this one. If you have any questions, you can try to ask them. If we have feedback, we will get you the information. This is just an update on what we did to our capital and unusual budget to 1019. I think that a lot of the work has been done. There's still a lot of new work to be done. Also, you know, these numbers will look very different once we recruit payables at the end of December. It just seems like we don't invoice this, and then all of a sudden, there they are. So stay tuned. Also, I wanted to comment on the negative differences. In some cases, there's an explanation that we are using funds from another project. When we do the annual report to council on budget shift, you will see, we will address the negative numbers on the area.
Any questions?
Just one quick one, and I probably ask this every year. If we're not spending some of the funds of capital for some of these projects, do those funds go into revenue?
Well, it depends. It depends. If the funds were coming out of a reserve, we just don't take it out.
Okay.
If it's a net tax levy situation, like the municipal payment program, whatever's not spent, we put it back into the balance.
And if a project, for whatever reason, doesn't, can't be done, and it's pushed into 2020, the money's carried. All right, thank you. Q3 investments.
All right. Investments have rebounded in 2019. As you know, they hit a low point at the end of 2018. The year-to-date on the one investment, so we've got a significant amount of money invested is 18.12%, largely due to the equity coming back in 2019. And 2019 looks really good because the end of 2018 didn't. So I'm happy to say that that's all coming back. I would like to take one minute to update you on recruiting investor. We've had a fair number of meetings, walk on calls, since I spoke to you about it last. We are now, we've now moved the date to go recruit an investor to April 1st. Municipalities just didn't think they had the time. It's a complicated process. What I want to tell you is I'm working on a client questionnaire and our investment policy statement right now, and determining what funds we can actually do under the recruiter investor regime. I hope to finish that by the first weekend of December, so that the one people can look at it, get back to me and say, hey, we're going to make these changes, or what do you think? And then I would like to present it to council in January. That's the next step. So not to complicate matters, I'll just keep moving forward. But that's our next step, and that's what I'll be doing from now to the end of November. So we look at actually investing in the recruiter investor regime in June 2020. So these investments will pretty much stay where they are until then.
Thanks, Charlotte. Any questions? So based on this report and the trend that's followed, we should hit our goal for this year?
We're over 3% in most of our investments. The only one we're not is the high interest savings account, which is 2.41%. But so far, about 3% is the magic. Now, having said that...
If that happened, okay, no, no, no. Go ahead.
The equity fund, we don't utilize the revenue. We can't. We have to report a lower of cost to market.
But we had said, what was it, 900 this year?
Yeah, we transferred over 900 to realize.
So if we actually, suppose we actually make 950. What does, what do we do with that 50? Does that just roll on the reserves? Does it offset taxation? Or is...
We haven't been in that situation before.
Yes.
All right.
We only move over what's in the budget.
All right. Anything else? All right, 2019 third quarter contracts.
So those are the contracts that were awarded between July and September 2019 that were over 30,000, and we have a small list. Again, we're still looking at payables coming in for this year, so a fair number of these haven't been completed.
Any questions? All right. September 2019 financials.
Okay, I went through it this time, looking for suggestions to SLT in particular, you guys are over, you guys are under, so that we are preparing for the last quarter. And so they kind of know where they're at, so I poked at a couple of them. Nothing that's overly concerning to me, and whatever variances we do have, I felt that we could explain.
Does anyone? Counsel Correia?
Yeah, so this is more on the private side of these issues. I'm just looking at the, trying to understand the water sewer, looking at the variant this time without making it appear. Where it's like, it was like 32% variance on the revenue. Is that confirmed?
Thank you for bringing that up. I was going to, really. When I printed the report, we didn't have all of September built. When I looked back just late last week, we did. So there is a difference. When I looked at it, it was 185. Last week, it was over 300 for September. So it, there you go. So thank you for bringing that up.
Anything else? All right, let's move forward. Community resource policy amendments and appeals. Hillary, you take this, too?
Yeah, so we're just continuing on with our policy review, so for, for, um, for the, 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 um, for the,
Alright, so quickly going around the table, starting with Counselor Van Loon.
Anything?
Yeah.
Went to the museum for the Remembrance Day thing on Saturday. Brayden did a real good presentation here and there's different things on display for the next week if anybody's interested in Remembrance Day and the history and the involvement of the Canora citizens. It's really interesting stuff, I recommend it.
Thank you. Counselor Goss? Counselor Smith? Counselor McMillan? Counselor Rocco?
The new Art Center at the Muse has a lot of really great programming underway. I actually signed up for a watercolor class. I thought that seemed like a really relaxing idea. And they are anticipating that the Art Center itself will probably be open by next week to start holding classes in there.
Good. Counselor Wayne. Right. Since I'm just back, I better... So, uh... We will now adjourn. We've got a ten-minute break and then we'll come back for the public meeting at noon. Oh, we have to adjourn to the closed?
Yes.
Okay. So we need whoever has the motion to adjourn to the closed meeting, please do so.
Oh, no. No, sorry. Yes, it's the motion to close?
Yeah.
That's me. Resolution number two, Your Worship, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Smith. The council now adjourns to a closed session at eleven forty-nine a.m. And pursuant to Section 239 of Municipal Act 2001 as amended, the closed session will discuss items pertaining to the follow... Following: One, personal matter about an identifiable individual. Two matters, biz war requirement and KDS impact. Labor relations, one matter, volunteer firefighter.
All in favor? Carried to order. This is a public meeting to discuss the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and official plan amendment. Read D-09-19-03 and D-14-1909. Read 331 Ninth Street North, the former mill site. The purpose of today's public meeting is to present planning applications in a public forum as required by the Planning Act. Following presentations by the applicant and our city planner, any planning advisory committee member will be afforded an opportunity to speak, and at that time the meeting will then be open to the public for comments and questions. The public has been encouraged to read the city planner's planning report in advance of the public meeting, which may clarify questions in advance of the public meeting. Interested persons are requested to give their name and address for recording in the minutes. There is also a sign-in sheet for interested members of the public at the back of the room. Personal information collected as a result of this public hearing and on the forms provided at the meeting are collected under the authority of the Planning Act and will be used to assist in making a decision on this matter. All names, addresses, opinions, and comments may be collected and may form part of the minutes which will be available to the public. Questions regarding this collection should be forwarded to the city clerk. Notice was given by publishing in the Daily Meyer News, which in the opinion of the clerk of the city of Canora is of sufficiently general circulation in the area to which the proposed bylaw amendment would apply, and that would give the public reasonable notice of the public meeting. Notice was also provided by mail to every owner of property within one hundred and twenty meters of subject property, prescribed persons and public bodies, and posted online on the City Canora portal. An appeal can be made to the local planning appeal tribunal not later than twenty days after the day that the giving of notice is required by Section 3418 is completed by either the applicant or person or public body who, before the bylaws pass, makes oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions to the council and may not be added as a party unless in the opinion of the tribunal there are reasonable grounds to do so. A notice of appeal can be filed with the city clerk within the tribunal's required fee... With the tribunal's required fee of three hundred dollars. An appeal may only be made on the basis that the bylaw is inconsistent with a policy statement issued under subsection 3.1, fails to conform with or conflicts with a provincial plan, or fails to confirm to an applicable official plan. Noticeions are made at public meetings concerning applications unless otherwise noted. The public meeting is held to gather public opinion. The council of City Canora will have the opportunity to consider a decision at a future meeting of council. Herein, the applicant will have the opportunity to speak on behalf of their application, and the city planner will provide the summation of their report and recommendation, after which anyone who wishes to speak either for or against the application will be given the opportunity to do so, and a record will be kept of all comments. If anyone wishes to receive the notice of decision of council, please leave your name and address with the city planner. If anyone has a cellphone, could you now please turn it off or use the vibrate option only? Counsel, declaration of peculiar interest in a general nature thereof, either on today's agenda or from a previous meeting, or from a meeting in which a member was not in attendance. Seen none?
Alright. At this point then, the app... Brandon? We welcome Brandon Powell, correct? Okay. Brandon Powell will make the presentation on behalf of the applicant. Brandon, thank you. I will leave it up to however you want.
Nadia, unless you have any objections, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Brandon. Okay.
Alright, I'm on the hot seat. Okay. Thank you, counsel and mayor. Before I begin, I'd just like to express my gratitude to the city's administration throughout this process, particularly the planning representatives, Nadia DeSanti and Debbie Kloski, for their efforts and time, working with us and the applicant, and providing constructive dialogue on policy and regulations. It's essential for the enhancement of these applications, so thank you for that. Today, I am going to provide a rather high-level overview of the applications here. The details will be further noted in the planner's report here subsequent to me. So, without further ado, I've got a very short presentation. I thought what I'd like to do here is to start off with a brief history of the lands. Abitibi Consolidated owned and operated a major paper mill on the subject lands for over eighty years. At its peak, the mill employed fifteen hundred people. Due to the changing market conditions and higher energy costs, the mill permanently closed in late 2005. The current landowner is 5901058 Manitoba Limited, and they acquired the land in 2007. The location of the site is bounded by Ninth Street North to the north, Ninth Avenue north to the east, Fifth Street north to the south, and Veterans Drive to the west. There are some existing uses on the site. There's three existing buildings, and they're currently home to Atlantic Industries, Kenan Builders, and First Student Bus Lines. In terms of the vision of the site, my client is seeking to redevelop the former mill site in alignment with local needs and priorities such as economic and housing diversification by establishing a mixed-use area consisting of industrial, commercial, and residential uses. Sustainable development will be encouraged through the adaptive reuse of existing former mill facilities, providing opportunities for a mix of different uses. The landowner is currently entering... entertaining serious interest in the site for all proposed land uses. Landowner is proposing a mix of different uses. For example, residential development will probably take up around thirteen and a half hectares of land. Commercial development will account for about three point two four hectares of land, and the balance of the property equating to just over sixteen hectares will be reserved for industrial development. This is sort of a snapshot of the changes in the land use that are being proposed. The current land use map is on top. The proposed land use map is on the bottom. In terms of existing land uses, there's an industrial area with a future development overlay, a rail yard with a future development overlay, and a small residential development area to the northeast of the property. Surrounding land uses include an established area and open space to the north, established area and open space to the east, established area to the south, and to the west, established area, rural area, and commercial development area. The proposed land uses will include a commercial development area to the northwest, residential development areas along the south and to the northeast, and industrial development area with sort of centrally contained on the site. Again, from a zoning perspective, current zoning map is on top. The proposed zoning map is on the bottom. In terms of existing zoning, there is heavy industrial and residential second density with a holding provision on it. Surrounding zoning includes residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional to the north, residential, institutional, and open space to the east, residential to the south, and institutional and industrial to the west. In terms of the proposed zoning, we're proposing general commercial to the northwest, residential third density with holding provisions to the south and to the northeast, and downzoning heavy industrial to light industrial contained within the center of the site. In terms of site suitability, my client was very much considerate of policies and priorities of the city, not in terms of the site itself, but general policies and priorities of the city and the community itself. When defining its vision, our client looked at a number of documents, key documents that the city had in place, including the official plan. The official plan spoke to key themes such as sustainable development, affordable housing, diversified economy, and complete communities. The community improvement plan itself for the area, specific to the site, noted priorities around creating jobs and affordable housing, including revitalizing the site itself. Canora Affordable Housing Report spoke about the increased supply of affordable shelter. The community... or sorry, the Canora Community Safe and Well-being Plan of 2015 spoke to promoting a healthier and safer place to live and encouraging development and community revitalization. And the City of Canora Vision 2020 Strategic Plan spoke to developing the economy and strengthening foundations through support of diverse housing types and the development of vacant transitional lands. And finally, the Canora H-Friendly Strategic Plan spoke about housing accessibility and affordability. So, there's some common themes that were presented in many of these documents here. And those themes are pervasive, and they speak to diversifying the economy and housing in the city of Canora. So that's what's being proposed here today. Additionally, as a former and projected employment area, the location is in close proximity to potential customers and employees. There's good accessibility from Veterans Drive and Ninth Street North. The proposed industrial and commercial lands set on relatively level and suitable lands for redevelopment. Development along Fifth Street is proposed as residential, as industrial access is not permitted along existing residential roads. The proposed residential areas take advantage of significant elevations in existing treat areas as buffers between future light industrial lands. And the downzoning from heavy industrial, as well as the rezoning and removal of the rail yard, ease restrictions significantly on more sensitive land uses such as residential. That's the end of my presentation, I believe. Further details will be provided by Nadia. Thank you, Brandon.
I'll just add a brief introduction for the public. So Nadia DeSanti is our consultant planner. She is a professional planner based in Ottawa. So Nadia's going to be the planner for it. And hopefully this is going to be a lateral server in here. But this is going to be going on a slide volume plan. Okay, Nadia?
Okay, thanks, Devin. Good afternoon, Chair and community members. My colleague Anita Sock, who's also the rest of the professional planner, senior planner, who co-authored this report, is not with me at the moment. She's at another meeting, so I honestly acknowledge her professional colleagues as well.
So, to present the report, I'm going to just highlight on key things, and I will limit my presentation to twenty minutes. So again, the applications are for an official plan amendment to the City of Canora Official Plan that was adopted by council on May nineteen, 2015, and received ministerial approval on November fifth, 2015, as well as a zoning bylaw amendment application as it pertains to the City of Canora zoning bylaw that was adopted by council on December fifteenth in twenty... in 2015. These applications were submitted to the city by number company 5901058 Manitoba Limited. I'm going to be referring to the official plan amendment as OPA and the zoning bylaw amendment as ZBLA. So those are the two acronyms that I will use throughout the presentation. The lands are known as the former Abitibi Mill Site, 661 Ninth Street North, and described as unopened roads, lots and blocks on historical plans of survey, being pin number 42170-0256. The applications are to commit the development of the former Abitibi Mill Site to a mixed-use development supporting combination of industrial, commercial, and residential uses. The purpose and effect of the official plan amendment is to re-designate the subject lands from future development overlay, industrial development area, rail yard, and residential development area to commercial development area, industrial development area, and residential development area. The effect of the OPA is to enable commercial, industrial, and residential development to occur on the subject land. The purpose and effect of the zoning bylaw amendment is for a number of items here. So first bullet, is to rezone the subject lands from future development, heavy industrial, residential second density holding to general commercial, light industrial, light industrial exception forty-six, and residential third density holding R3H. The effect of the zoning bylaw amendment is to rezone lands to conform with the proposed OPA to enable commercial, light industrial uses and residential development to occur on the subject land. The effect of the light industrial exception zone forty-six is to allow a reduced front yard requirement from eighteen meters to one point six meters, and to allow reduced exterior side yards, the south setback from six meters to one point seven meters, and on the north side, six meters to two point four meters. These reductions are required, given the existing buildings on the site as a result of a concurrent consent application for the subject land. The effect of the residential third density holding, R3H, is to place the holding on the subject land. The holding symbol, the H, may not be removed until... It may not be removed, and development may not occur on a subject land until (a) a record of site condition satisfactory to residential use is submitted and approved; (b) supporting studies, including a transportation impact study, servicing study to address water, sanitary, groundwater requirements, a noise and vibration study, and a planning rationale are submitted and approved; and an agreement is entered into with the City of Canora for the implementation of recommendations and associated mitigation as required by the supporting studies referenced in (a) and (b) above to the satisfaction of the city if required. I do want to note that since the time of this report, there is a recommendation to add a site exception to the proposed general commercial zone, and it's to accommodate a front yard and an exterior side yard setback of a minimum of ten meters. So this proposed site exception to the GC zone has come up in the last few days and therefore not reflected in the report, but that is our recommendation for that. The intention is that the existing owner would continue to own the parcels to be designated industrial development area and zone light industrial in light industrial exception forty-six and sell off the remaining parcels. There has been some supporting documentation that was submitted as part of the OPA and the ZBLA application, although many of the reports date back to 2010, save and except for Mr. Powell's planning rationale. The predominant existing land use on the site is industrial, and it is designated industrial development area with a future development overlay. However, the site also includes residential development area land use to the northeast with a smaller rail yard land use, the rail spur to the southeast corner of the site. It is our understanding, based on discussions with the applicant and their agent, that the rail spur is no longer in operation. The applicant and owner of the land intend to decommission the rail spur with the approval for the residential use. Moving on to page nine of the report. Just some further policy background to the subject lands. So when the mill closed in 2006, the lands were predominantly vacant with the exception of three existing industrial buildings. In 2011, the City of Canora adopted the former mill site community improvement plan to encourage and provide incentives for the redevelopment of the underutilized site. In 2015, the community improvement policies in the city's official plan were revised to include policies to encourage and incentivize construction of affordable housing in keeping with provincial regulatory changes. In 2017, the former mill site CIP was expanded to implement those policies and to expand the community improvement project area to include lands west of Veterans Drive, to add financial incentive programs for housing, and to include updated policy and regulatory changes since the CIP was originally adopted in 2011. These changes were completed in consultation with the community and key stakeholders. As such, the existing former mill site CIP, updated in 2017, contains policies and financial programs which support the following vision for the redevelopment of the site, quote, "to create jobs and affordable housing for local residents and local indigenous peoples and provide business opportunities to use local resources by revitalizing the site in aesthetically pleasing manner." The proposed OPA and ZBLA support the future redevelopment of the site by permitting a broader range of land uses, including residential uses that have the potential to contribute to additional housing stock and a diverse range of housing types in the city. The provincial policy statement dated 2014. I will say that the province is updating the PPS. However, a final PPS has not been released. Therefore, the applications have been evaluated under the existing 2014 provincial policy statement. Policy 1.1.1B states that healthy, livable, and safe communities are sustained by accommodating an appropriate range and mix of residential and other uses to meet long-term needs. The proposed OPA and ZBLA would enable residential uses to be permitted, thereby contributing to the range and mix of available housing types in Canora. Policy 1.1.1C provides that healthy, livable, and safe communities are sustained by avoiding development and land use patterns which may cause environmental or public health and safety concerns. Proposed OPA and ZBLA support protection of public health and safety through the inclusion of a holding zone on the subject lands proposed to be re-designated and rezoned for residential uses until such time that a record of site condition and supporting studies are submitted by future landowners and developers and approved and any required recommendations or mitigation measures from the supporting studies are implemented. The proposed holding zone for the parcels to be rezoned to R3 establishes this protection. Policy 1.1.3.3 identifies appropriate locations and promotes opportunities for intensification and redevelopment, including brownfield sites. The subject lands would be considered a brownfield site, which is, according to the PPS, as undeveloped or previously developed properties that may be contaminated. They are usually, but not exclusively, former industrial or commercial properties that may be underutilized, derelict, or vacant. Policy 1.3.2.2 explains that planning authorities may permit conversion of lands within employment areas to non-employment areas. The proposed OPA and ZBLA contemplate a portion of the site to be converted from potential employment lands into other uses, i.e. residential. The majority of the lands will remain for employment uses. Policy 1.4 explains that planning authorities shall maintain an appropriate range and mix of housing types and densities. The proposed OPA and ZBLA would enable residential uses to be permitted, thereby facilitating the future development of additional housing stock, including a range of housing types permitted in the proposed R3 zone. Policy 1.7.1E explains that long-term economic prosperity should be supported by promoting the redevelopment of brownfield sites. Policy 3.2.2 claims that sites with contaminants in land shall be assessed and remediated as necessary prior to any development activity on the site associated with the proposed use, such that there will be no adverse effects. Proposed OPA and ZBLA promote the redevelopment of contaminated areas for repurposed uses and will be remediated by future law owners as per provincial regulatory requirements. The City of Canora Official Plan has many principles, and I'm just going to read out the principles and not tell the objectives to keep the presentation in a timely manner. So I'm just going to list the principles. Principle one, sustainable development. Principle three, affordable housing. Principle four, diversified economy. Principle six, complete communities. And principle seven, neighborhood design. Section 3.6 of the official plan contains policies for development and redevelopment adjacent to railway and transportation corridors. The policies state that where development is proposed within seventy-five meters of a rail yard or railway corridor, submission of a vibration study prepared to the satisfaction of council and consultation with CP Rail and addressing the potential impacts of vibration and recommended mitigation measures may be required. Appropriate safety measures such as setback firms and security fencing shall be provided in association with all development proposals adjacent to rail yards or railway corridors. The CP Rail was circulated as part of these applications, and they request registration of their noise clause on the title on residential lots, which will be made a condition of approval for the consent application that is going to go on a separate planning process. The holding zone and future development application submissions for draft plan and subdivision, draft plan of condominium, and site plan control will determine what studies and mitigations are required by CP Rail prior to the removal of the holding zone. In the residential development area designation in the official plan, residential uses in all housing types, commercial, retail, institutional uses such as schools and places of worship are permitted. In the commercial development area designation, permitted uses include but are not limited to automobile service stations, building supply outlets, motels, hotels, restaurants... to automobile service stations, building supply outlets, motels, hotels, restaurants, tourist establishments, shopping centers, and accessory uses. In the industrial redevelopment area, the, sorry, in the industrial development area, the permitted uses include industrial, for example, and through the 2017 community improvement plan, the policies also envision that the development of employment uses could also include training facilities. Section 5.4.1 Redevelopment Lands of the OP states that lands shown as future development overlay, sorry, future development area on Schedule A shall be redeveloped. However, there are some policies that do need to be applied. So those include connection to full municipal services is required, however, one of the newly proposed lots is proposed to be off the grid. Land shall be subject to the preparation of a concept plan prior to development. The required concept plan will illustrate land uses, proposed density, pedestrian particular movements, open space, municipal services, traffic impact, as well as other elements as identified by the city. Where a change in land use is identified through a concept plan, amendments to the official plan and zoning bylaw will be required prior to development. Section 8.2, the community improvement section of the official plan, I'm not going to go through those details as I've kind of relayed some of that information already. I do want to conclude at the official plan, conforming with section 8.8 potential contaminated sites, which state that where planning approvals are required prior to the development of any property which may have been contaminated by previous uses or where a change in use to more sensitive land use has been proposed, council shall require the proponent to submit a record of site condition prepared by a qualified consultant in accordance with the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change guidelines. In some cases where site remediation requirements are known and feasible, planning approvals using a holding zone may be considered. So this is what we are proposing for the residential parcel. In the interim, uses permitted on such properties shall be restricted to existing land uses. The effect of this policy is to prevent the development of a more sensitive land use until such time that site remediation has been completed. The province uses records of site condition as a safeguard to protect public health and safety from contamination which may be present on a property in which may result in an adverse effect as defined under the Environmental Protection Act. Changes to the proposed use of a property can trigger the need for filing an RSD, that is Record of Site Condition. Figure 6 of the report is information that was provided by the province in a presentation to the city in February 2019, and it lists what is considered a Category 1 and a Category 2. So a Category 2 is residential, and that is considered a more sensitive land use. The proposed OPA conforms to the official plan and the principles that I stated, and it intends to intensify a large, underutilized brownfield site through redevelopment and adaptive reuse. It also supports the objective of providing a mix and range of housing types, so the enabling of residential development to occur. Proposed OPA also supports Principle 6, in that it contributes to mixed-use neighborhoods and a mix of uses towards creating complete communities. I do want to state that the environmental site assessments that were submitted as part of the application date back to 2010. They, the ministry requires those to be updated. They're only valid for 18 months, therefore, the recommendation for putting on the holding until studies are completed. And I do want to acknowledge that the applicant and agent acknowledged that a record of site condition will be required prior to the development of any residential uses, and they accept the placement of a holding zone on all lands proposed to be re-designated and rezoned for residential uses, subject to the satisfaction of the RSD requirement and requirements for supporting studies and implementation of recommendations and mitigation measures for future development applications, including the need for various studies as listed. With respect to the zoning bylaw, the existing zoning for the former Abitibi Mill Site is currently heavy industrial. As part of the interdepartmental and agency circulation, I'm only going to highlight some of the, some of the comments that are related to, specifically, details that are related to the site. There are other comments that would happen at a building permit stage in terms of ensuring fire code, sorry, Ontario Building Code compatibility, so I'm not going to get into those. So I'm just going to highlight key ones. So from the engineering department, the ability for current sewer infrastructure to accept additional loads is not known. Roads are substandard in many locations, narrowing down to one lane in winter. Traffic impact study will need to take into account not only the immediate access and egress of the new development, but also take into consideration of the road capacity and functionality of the existing road system that proposed development will rely upon to get vehicles and/or pedestrians to and from the collector road. All three residential sites will have servicing constraints and limitations, and the city is not able to advise on existing capacity. In addition, there is the concern of an access egress to the proposed creation of Lot 1 off Veterans Drive. Again, a condition through the consent application would likely be required for any conditions that are needed for lot creation. So in the absence of having a supporting study on servicing and transportation, that's why the proposed holding requirement, or the holding zone for the R3 lists those studies, as more information will need to be submitted with future applications for development. Synergy North has also requested three-meter easements around each anchor at five locations along 9th Street to protect existing anchors buried under the fevers at an angle into the property. Northwestern Health Unit has identified that as future development applications are processed for the subject lands, the city will require parkland dedication or cash and move parkland. And CP Rail is concerned with the sighting of a new residential development in close proximity to the Canora Yard. Proposed land use is not compatible with the continuous shunting activities at a rail yard such as this. Round-the-clock outdoor operations at the yard are consistent with other industrial uses, which fall under the MOE's Class 3 industrial facilities as per their D6 guidelines. Therefore, a noise and vibration study is required to ensure that the proposed dwellings, so dwellings in the future, meet NPC 205 requirements. Failing that, a minimum distance, a minimum separation distance of 300 meters must be applied as per the D6 guidelines. In terms of public comments, at the date of, as of the date of the report, which was November 7th, six submissions were received from the public. I do want to note that there was a planning advisory committee meeting held on October 29th, 2019. On pages 25 and 26 include the resolutions from that meeting. One of the resolutions also directed staff, city staff, to investigate how the requirement for decommissioning the rail yard be implemented through planning approvals. So that will be, that is known to the applicant and the agent, and as they have stated at the PAC meeting, that upon approval of these applications, they would decommission that rail yard. In terms of our evaluation, the proposed official plan amendment is supported by the principles in section 2 of the official plan. It would achieve the creation of complete communities and neighborhoods with mixed uses and also allow for the redevelopment of a former Abitibi Mill Site. The zoning bylaw amendment is intended to rezon land to conform with the proposed OPA to enable commercial, light industrial uses and residential development to occur on the subject land. And the proposed amendments are consistent with the provincial policy statement from 2014. Again, an application for consent has also been submitted concurrently. However, that consent application will have a separate planning process but is running in parallel with these official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment applications. In terms of our professional planning recommendations, it is our professional planning opinion that the following amendments as proposed for the application for official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment be approved in the public comments that may yet to be received, with the added notation that we also recommend that the proposed general commercial zone be a site, have an exception to require a front yard and exterior side yard setback, but both setbacks of a minimum of 10 meters. Thank you for me to present this, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
So just so everybody understands the process, any person may express his or her views of the amendment, and the record will be kept of all comments. So the way it's going to work is, we'll ask if there's people who want to speak in favor, people that want to speak in opposition. There'll be no opportunity for questions during that portion. The council will discuss it, and then it'll go back where members of the public can then ask questions. So just so everybody understands the process. When you speak, you need to identify yourself and your address so that it will become part of the public record. All right? So is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in favor of the zoning bylaw and the official plan amendment? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition of the amendment? You want, I'm sorry, you want to speak in, could you?
My name is Mike Davis. I live on 11 Macdonnell Street in Llanen, Brooklyn. And I'm here on behalf of Lake of Woods Minister Association. We have run over the zoning change and the rating of our, we're speaking today in favor of the zoning change. We applaud the city council mayor on developing residential areas for our community. We also applaud the development of potential commercial venues. And so our only concern is, is that that corner of Veterans and 9th may be used for potential casino, and we are just stating a concern. We are in favor of the zoning change.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of? Please?
My name is Allison Crew. I live at 215 4th Street North. Well, I don't own a house there. I live down Minaki Highway right now. Like him, I am in favor of this amendment, but with a proposed change to it. So I'm just going to read what I have, and I'll get around to, well, my concern as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and city and council members, members of the public, city staff, and members of the media, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm a resident of Canora, a member of the local coalition of volunteers called Making Canora Home, and I am here to deliver remarks about the proposed planning and zoning amendments for the old Abitibi Mill Site on behalf of the coalition. I am also an administrator for the online petition, which speaks to the same issue. To begin the submission, I would like to state that I am not against a casino in Canora. That's not the issue. I am, however, strongly against the new casino being located at Veterans Drive and 9th Street North for the following reasons. Number one, residential proximity. The only way a new casino will profit Canora's economy is if it draws its patrons from outside the local area. Quote, "To the degree that a casino can attract outside money from a wide geographic area, the level of prosperity and tax revenue of the immediate jurisdiction will be enhanced," end quote, from the National Society, oh, sorry, Association of Realtors. Here, I would like to point out to an article about the neighboring casino to the east, Gateway's Casino in Thunder Bay, which reports more than 90% of casino profits come from local money, adding up to approximately $52 million per year leaving local circulation. At the old Abitibi Mill location, you will be encouraging our local residents to spend their money, and you can expect similar statistics to Thunder Bay as our local economy will pour into the hands of Gateway Casinos, and the city may see a mere 5% return in the form of tax revenue. As noted in the proponent's submission for the redevelopment of the former Abitibi Mill Site, Lombard North Group's planning rationale states that the site is located in close proximity to existing and future residential uses, creating convenient connections for potential customers and employees. And today, that is very encouraging that there is so many, so much talk about residential development. Definitely in support of that. However, by allowing the casino to be built in the middle of a highly residential area near the urban center, you are increasing the casino's accessibility and enticement to our local citizen, and therefore, the casino will profit from our local economy. To this point, I respectfully ask the council that it protects its citizens by prohibiting a casino to be built at the former Abitibi Mill Site, as this site will promote a daily reminder of the illusion that gambling offers financial freedom and social connection. It is also worth noting that building a casino away from the city center and residential areas would require patrons to drive, but transportation should not be an issue for the population targeted for casino patronage. So there is no strategic purpose for a casino to be located within visual and walking distance of a heavily populated residential area. Point number two, housing prices. Recent Canadian systematic analysis of the impact of casinos on nearby neighborhoods reveals the following from 2018. Quote, "New casinos generate negative impacts on housing values and rent, suggesting that casinos are on-net a residential disamenity that leads to losses in rental earnings and housing wealth for nearby property owners. It is estimated that home prices will decline 8% over the next five years in neighborhoods near new casinos." Number three, increased traffic. A casino would significantly increase traffic in this area, contributing to an already unsafe area for pedestrians. A study in 2012 by Muranti Adal found that higher vehicle pedestrian cyclist accidents occur in areas of greater population density and pedestrian and cyclists on the street as more people are exposed to potential road traffic injuries in those areas. Children and adults can be seen walking to school in either directions to Beaver Bray, Evergreen, and Seven Generations along 9th Street North and Veterans Drive. As well, casino customers and vehicles will intensify traffic through the downtown core without any advantage to the core because heavier traffic discourages stopping in the downtown core due to maneuverability. Number four, close proximity to downtown core. Coating from a 2013 study, "While spillover and crowd effects may exist, they are only noted to have statistical relevance for five years post-new casino, and only in related accommodation, food, and beverage service industries. No other local industry experiences job gains related to the creation of casino gambling jobs," end quote. In addition, Gateway runs successful proprietor restaurants on their casino properties. I believe that a restaurant with the bulk buying power of a large corporation behind it and located at the corner of Veterans Drive and 9th Street North, mere blocks from downtown, would create significant and unfair competition to the restaurants that already serve the downtown patrons. A casino in close proximity to our revitalized downtown, which relies heavily on Lake of the Woods branding and promotes unique recreational activities that Lake of the Woods offers, visitors, may disrupt our branding power as North America's premier boating destination." Number five, my final point. Permitted use in zoning bylaw. Permitted use in zoning by law. Currently, the Canora zoning by law does not have a casino gaming facility as a permitted use in any zone. However, we were advised that the permitted use of recreational facilities in a general commercial zone would include a casino. We would argue that a casino is not a recreational facility in the general meaning of the phrase, and that the casino should not be a permitted use in the case of the general commercial lot being created by this amendment. In fact, we would argue that casino gaming facility should be a specific permitted use in its own specific zone. Having a specific permitted use for a casino allows a municipality hosting a casino to have control over where it is located, and importantly, allow the citizens to consider the site of the casino in a separate, unique planning and zoning amendment with its own public meaning, where the discussion isn't clouded by having a multi-layered zoning amendment include an amendment that could accommodate the building of a casino in a totally inappropriate location in the city. We think council should pass this amendment, so I am in favor of passing this amendment, but council should also block any casino at the corner of Veterans Drive and Ninth Street North by expressly excluding casino and gaming facilities as a permitted use in the GC, general commercial, zone lands. And further, council should commit to creating a site-specific permitted use of casino gaming facility for when an appropriate site for the casino is located. Doing so would create a transparency around the process that would go a long way to calming fears about the coming casino and the potential negative impact it could have on the city. To date, approximately 700 Canora citizens have signed a petition that asks council to ensure that the proposed amendment clearly excludes casino and all other gaming facilities from being built on the former Abbottibby Mill Site. In conclusion, I am here today to ask you to think, carefully consider what is the highest and best use for that land. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of?
I'm Ed Crinick. I'm 132 Richy Road, and I'm winging this one. Some of her comments I listened to, she hasn't got an idea what she's talking about. Thunder Bay gets 90% of their business from the city for their casino, because they've got about 60,000 or 70,000 people. Do you think Gateway's going to build a casino here for 15,000 people? Most of the people who come to that casino are going to be from out of town. You're going to bring in bus tours, you're going to bring people to shop downtown, and whatever else. My sister worked in a casino in Warroad for 10 years. She said the first year, you've seen a lot of people from Warroad go to casino. She was in security. Second year, it was about 30%. The third year, there was less than 5%. It was buses and outside people that are going to use that casino. So whatever you got your information from, get it straight.
All right, thank you. When we're doing this, everyone's entitled to their opinion, so let's be respectful of everybody, okay? And thank you for everybody's comments so far. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of?
So my name is David Boyle, and I am the pastor at Lakeside Baptist Church, and also a member of the Lake of the Woods Christian Ministerial. So I commend this board for seeking more ways for residential. I think residential has certainly been a concern for Canora for quite a while, and I've only been here a little over two years, and have seen that need being expressed from right across the economic spectrum of the desire to see more affordable housing and the need for that in the community. So I'm thankful that that's being addressed at and looked at, and that means quite a lot to both my congregants and people within the area. So I thank you for taking the time to look at that and address that, and I hope that becomes the priority of rezoning in this area, that we would see that that be a part of how things go. Again, I am behind the report put forward with Making Canora Home, just of a sense of needing to have caution and concern about a casino that we think is through carefully. You had mentioned a number of things from our speaker on the speakerphone, and I haven't been able to kind of quote exactly where she'd mentioned, but I think one was 1.1.1B to provide long-term needs, then 1.1.1C to provide health and safety needs. Then there is mentioned long-term economic prosperity with no adverse effects was mentioned. Public and health and safety needs are deemed as important, as was described, particularly around environmental. But I would say that we need to also incorporate holistically the emotional and spiritual health of people as well. So we really want to be careful when we move forward, and I'd ask that you would really weigh things carefully through. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on the positive? All right. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition to the zoning or official All right. Members of council, it's your opportunity for discussion and questions. Counselor Smith?
I just want a certification from Nadia. And I'm sorry, you mentioned this twice. You have some lead information about a 10-meter setback. Can you just run through that again?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, at the time of this report, which was dated November 7th, there's been looking at the general commercial zone. There is a lot of setback, and so what we are recommending is that the proposed plan to be zoned, rezoned, general commercial, also would basically be rezoned as an exception zone or a site-specific zone to include a minimum front yard setback of 10 meters and an exterior setback with a minimum of 10 meters. So that's 10 meters from the property line.
So I thought that in the beginning, when you're talking about that GC zone, you talked about a front yard and a side yard setback that was diminished.
So the effect of including this would be, the general commercial zone right now does not have a front yard setback requirement, and so what we're recommending is that there be a side yard setback requirement for the front yard of a minimum of 10 meters. So that's, any proposed development building would need to be set back 10 meters from the road. So a front yard and an exterior setback. So Veterans Drive would be the front yard because it's a shorter length, and then Ninth Street North would be the exterior side yard, and so we're recommending a 10-meter minimum setback from Ninth Street North.
I think what Counselor Smith was saying is, the part of the petition that you were saying, so that was actually industrial portions that are already developed, so the existing buildings, the industrial buildings, I currently would be in commerce, I can remember dollars here, explosives. So those buildings right now are closer to the side yards and the front yard and so on, because of the like industrial facilities. So there's also an exception requirement for those buildings.
Yeah, that makes it clear, because I thought the GC zone, the first numbers that were used, so is it, just to be clear, 10 meters setback from Ninth Street, then 10 meters setback from Veterans Drive on those lines?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, that clarified.
Any other questions from council at this time? Okay. At this point, members of public, are there any questions of the application? This would be your time to ask those questions now. All right. Seeing that, and there's no further questions or comments, this council, the November 19th, is it 19? Yeah, November 19th meeting, this will be brought forward for our consideration for a decision. So at this point in time, the meeting is declared closed. I thank everyone for coming forward today, and also for those who brought forward their comments. Thank you. Nadia, Brandon, thank you for...